The hour of 12 o'clock, having arrived, this meeting in the Santa Cruz City Council is called to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Newsom?
Present.
Brown, here. Watkins?
Here.
Brunner?
Present.
Calentari Johnson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Mr. Smith?
And Mayor Keely?
Present. The quorum having been established, we will move on. Statement of disqualifications. Any member have a statement of disqualification on today's agenda? Seeing and hearing none? This would be the opportunity for anyone who wishes to address us on a matter on our closed session agenda. This would be the opportunity to do so. We will be going into closed session following this opportunity for folks to speak. Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online who wishes to comment on the closed session agenda?
No one with their hand raised.
No one with their hand raised. Last call here in council chambers. Seeing no one. We will move to closed session. There are four items on our closed session. They are published in our agenda. What we will do at this time is adjourn into closed session. We will return not earlier than 12:30 or so. We will not begin again until 12:30 at least. We now stand adjourned into closed session.
Recording stopped.
Santa Cruz City Council is back in session following our closed session. We are...let me ask clerk, call the roll again.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Newsom?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Brunner?
Present.
Calentari Johnson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Here.
And Mayor Keely?
Here. Quorum having been established, we are on oral communication. This is the opportunity for anyone to address us on any item under our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda for a period of time up to two minutes. This is the opportunity to do so. Anyone which should speak under oral communication. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Fred Keely. How are you all?
Very well, sir.
Oh, you want to go up next?
Yes.
Well, okay.
I want to make this really quickly and then be gone. Good morning. I think there's only one person on the city council who was here last time. The then sitting President of the United States let loose ice on our communities across the country, including right here, Santa Cruz County and the city and Beach Flats. So I want to show you, I'm proud of the way our community responded. This is from the 8th of November, Friday, and I'm disappointed that the Sentinel didn't have photographs of any of you right here. All politics is local. It feels like our democracy is unraveling. We see it out there in Washington, but all politics is local. If it's going to be held together, it's going to be held together in each little community. We dealt with this as a city and restored a sense of confidence in our police department, which was wrongly implicated in the ICE action. And we remedied that by inviting the city council, the then chief of police and his two vice chiefs to come to a healing ceremony. Our bishop, our late Bishop Richard Garcia, came and celebrated with the community to restore peace between the people of Beach Flats and the surrounding areas. Our city council to make sure that they understood that you serve them, you serve all the residents of the city, and our police department serves everybody because we are a sanctuary city. So I would like to ask that you very quickly, by the end of this evening, have a little statement saying that we are a sanctuary city and we will maintain that posture. Our police department and every other agency will maintain that posture because all politics is local.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person under oral communication. What we'll do is we'll take you, and then we're going to alternate folks who are calling in online so that everyone has an opportunity. Good afternoon, welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Dear Mayor Keely, Vice Mayor Golda, and members of the city council, my name is Kevin Cummings, longtime resident of St. George and a first-time season ticket holder for the Santa Cruz Warriors. I am the founder of GenLaw AI Legal Summaries, and I'm here today to read a poem of thanks and triumph crafted by AI, perhaps the first before this council. "Twas two months before Christmas, and all through St. George the tenants were stirring, their strength to be forged. The rents were set high with no end in sight, but hope shone among them, a beacon of light. The elders, the veterans, the disabled too, faced threats of displacement, but they all knew that justice was waiting just down the street at a place where good minds and bold hearts meet. In city hall chambers, a story was told of tenants left fighting in a system too cold. Mayor Fred Keely, with wisdom so clear, said Santa Cruz stands for its people; don't fear. And Kandadi, the lawyer, with the law as his shield, joined Newsom to draft an ordinance that would not yield. Seven council members, united and strong, heard the cries of the tenants; they righted the wrong. We'll cap these increases at 10%, protecting the vulnerable from being spent. The gavel came down, the vote was complete, and the news spread quickly to St. George Street. The tenants rejoiced, no more despair; a season of hope replaced the scare. And though the fight took courage and grit, it was made possible because we didn't quit. So today we gather, we come to say thanks to Keely, the council, in their heroic ranks, to Kandadi and Newsom, and all who believe in fairness in justice. It's why we achieve. With unity and hope, we face what's ahead, knowing Santa Cruz stands where the lives we have led." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's very kind. We'll take the first person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting. Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon. This is Harry Richard Arnold with Western State's News Service. I see you're granting two people from the Board of Supervisors a November 19th award of some type. And one of them is Bruce McPherson. Bruce McPherson was appointed by Arnold Schwarzenegger to Secretary of State.
So I am going to...
He brought all of that in.
We're going to...well, what I'm going to do, I want to make sure you're clear. Oral communication is the opportunity for people to speak on items under our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda. And what you are speaking to is, in fact, on our agenda. So if you would like to call back in later when we take up that agenda item, that is fine. Good afternoon and welcome to the council meeting.
My name is Rena Dubin. Thanks for letting me speak today. I live on the east side of the city limits, and lately the sidewalk on SoCal is becoming impassable. The first issue is safety. Some people frequenting SoCal are completely harmless, some are violent and frightening, and I have had people yell things at me, throw glass near me, verbally accost and harass me, all in the last few weeks. These kinds of incidents don't get reported. I don't report them, but they do happen all the time. Six weeks ago, my daughter witnessed a physical assault about 30 feet in front of her. On SoCal, a woman was walking to start her shift at Ace Hardware. A random man grabbed her arm and kicked her shin. Luckily, the woman brandished a knife that she happened to be carrying with her, and the guy ran off. This wasn't at midnight. This was 8:00 in the morning, and my daughter still had to finish walking to work. We can do better. Secondly, the sidewalk is so disgusting that I sometimes walk in the bike lane, which I know is endangering cyclists and myself, but it's better than walking in the human excrement or the puddles of urine. I'm just so lucky I'm not in a wheelchair and I'm able to avoid it or not using a stroller. But please look over the photos that I've collected, and that's just over the last six days. SoCal is getting really disgusting and unwalkable. I call Public Works when I see human poop on the sidewalk. I call Public Works when I see a dead rat on the sidewalk. I call Public Works when I see needles on the sidewalk. But I can't be calling every time. I'm gagging over yet another urine puddle, or I'm tiptoeing between all the trash. I'm really compassionate, honestly very compassionate regarding the root causes, but that doesn't preclude routine power washing or other solutions. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Bradley Snyder. Wow, the east side's starting to sound like San Francisco. I guess, yeah, there was the guy and his dog that got run over over on 7th, and then I guess there was a shooting at Almar. These are all very disturbing incidents. One thing I've had a longstanding resentment over, when I was a teenager, I had a temporary job at the Santa Cruz Police Headquarters. It was just a modest one-story building behind the library on, I believe that's Locust Street there. And now they have a, you know, very large building that was built for them with redevelopment funds, and it's just a block and a half from really one of the seediest parts of the city where you don't feel safe. People don't feel safe between the downtown. Now that the metro's gone, there's no, you know, permanent security presence. And, you know, I've heard of incidents in that area, and I've been subject to incidents in that area. That's not entirely what I'm going to talk about. The...it's been 409 days since the business in Gaza Strip has been going on. Back in December, of course, UCSC students were so agitated that they broke a window at council chambers. I think Joe Biden's sending MREs to the region. I think you should switch to the cold weather MREs or maybe scoops of ice cream, you know, for the people that need food aid in Gaza. Well, it looks like I have a few seconds left. Have a good holidays.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
And still James Ealing Whitman. I meant to start with the point of order, whatever. I'll work with it. So I'm wondering why the public is not always allowed to make comments during the proclamations. Hopefully, we are today. I'll leave it at that. So we did have a selection. You know, now we have a male Jesuit over a female Jesuit. And what is really going to happen? It's really quite exciting, you know? If the situation couldn't have been worse the last four years, the last four to eight years was pretty bad. The last eight to 16 was pretty bad. It's pretty doggone exciting when you look at his cabinet today and what's going on. I mean, according to Benjamin Netanyahu, a quote he did in 1990, is just bleeding the United States dry because that's what the government that controls Israel thinks of the United States. And so, you know, I hope that the United States doesn't turn into Gaza soon. In many ways, it already is. I mean, people are talking about safety, poop in the street and stuff. I don't know how many people have ever seen the film Apocalypto. It's quite a violent film. They end up releasing the captives, and I would rather be a released captive from that film than walk underneath the LED open streetlights because they are frequency weapons. Anybody can do their own research. Over 8,500 documents were declassified in 1976 about these frequency weapons. What hasn't been declassified? You know, I have a fun client I've known for 15 years. She says she prays for me, and I'm like, I really appreciate that. You know, I pray for people every time I see earbuds in their ears, a cellphone in their pocket or their breast or holding it to their ear, because people don't understand how dangerous this technology is that has largely just been rubber stamped, particularly in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Do we have anyone else online?
We do.
We do. We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Good afternoon. I'm Gregory Cole. I live overlooking the boardwalk, and I'm about 700 feet away from a spot I want to talk about. You were seated one mile from where surfing was introduced to the western hemisphere in 1885. It's the western hemisphere, not just the Monterey Bay. And because of that, I think it's very, very important for us as Santa Cruz citizens and people proud of our community to absolutely do the most beautiful job we can for that location. I have some illustrations, and I asked for five minutes. I wish I had it, but I don't. Do I just have two, or can I get away with five? Five? Okay.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Cole, two.
Two, okay. What you're looking at here is potentially what we could do with Three Princes Surf Point. I bring that to your attention because the state has come up with an initial plan, which is actually extremely disturbing to both the Seabright Association and the Surfing Society. They are denying access via a walkway all the way out to the point. They're denying it because, yes, their ADA funding is making them justify the funding by coming horizontally out from where the sidewalk is. If you go horizontally 75 feet out from where the sidewalk is, that means you're extremely steep and you'll never have handicap access to the point. It's illustrations I have here if I had five minutes. However, if you, as city council...you should be aware that in 2016, this one is signed by Cynthia Matthews, and it says, "Requesting support for enduring improvements to the overlook at the point so that the point may be preserved in prosperity." The county supervisors passed a similar resolution. So what I've done is I've dropped each off...for each of you, I've dropped off what I call...
You hold the key. It's in your box. But here's the key right here. If you get a chance, please, please, plug this into your computer, take a look at a 10-minute presentation on slides showing you what other cities around the world have done with similar situations. We have a lot to lose. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. I know you've put a lot of time into that over the years. Thank you, sir. Person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting. Three, two, one. Anybody else in council chambers wish to address us on a matter under oral communication? Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Russell. I apologize for the facial surgery, which was yesterday. Bad timing. I live at 1156 East Cliff Drive and overlook San Lorenzo Point Park. I have seen the state's plan to rejuvenate the park. I think it is a large mistake, great mistake, because it will institutionalize destruction of the point. Their intention is to prevent people walking out to the point on the east bank of the San Lorenzo River and also to prevent a staircase down to the beach at that point. That, to me, is a mistake. People are going to walk to the point anyway. We see it all the time. People are going down the bank. The point will get distracted. The bank will get distracted. The plan that Greg Cole has drawn up solves both those problems. The state is planning to use ADA money, but the park will not be ADA accessible. The plan that Greg has developed, which is essentially the same price, allows for ADA access to the full end of the park right now and eventually out to the end of the point because the park has a bump in the middle of it. If you cut that bump down, as Greg's plan does, access will be available. There is abundant local money, we believe. A quarter of a million here, which we would contribute toward adding that to the ADA money and to do it right. I've written to the local state representatives to get the park out of state control, which I believe was given from the city at one time. The revised plan can work and is feasible. The state's present plan, I think, is a disaster.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you both for your comments today.
One last comment.
No. But thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Cole. Anyone else? Oral communication? Anyone else online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon.
Can I comment after the oriole, the individual presentations?
I'm sorry. Say that again. I'm sorry. I just didn't hear you, sir.
Okay, that's all right. After oral communications, there's presentations. And can a person respond to those proclamations?
Can a person respond to those proclamations? Everything on our agenda, you can respond to.
There will be an opportunity for comment after each one of the proclamations?
Every item on our agenda, you can respond to.
Okay. We just want to double check because it's not on the consent agenda. It's under presentations. We just want to make sure.
Thank you. We are on...are there other folks online? Okay, we're on presiding officer announcements. I have none. Statements of disqualification. Any disqualifications on today's agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Additions and deletions. Ms. Bush, any additions, deletions? Madam City Attorney, any deletions?
None here.
City Attorney, report on closed session.
Yes. Councilment in closed session at noon in the Courtyard Conference Room. Council discussed two claims. The first was the claim of Cameron Abrams, and the second was the claim of Autumn Amber Parks. Those claims are also noted as Item 19 in your open session agenda. Council also discussed two items of existing litigation with legal counsel. Those items are the case of Robert Fleck versus Santa Cruz and the case of Elaine Viera versus PG&E at Owl. In the Viera case, the council did authorize the city to file a cross complaint against PG&E and also the property owner adjacent to where the trip-and-fall accident occurred. And there is no further action, no further report of action.
Thank you. City Council meeting calendar. Ms. Bush, anything you would like to draw to our attention since last meeting?
No changes, no.
Thank you very much. We are on the consent agenda. Ms. Brunner?
I have a statement of disqualification.
I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Please state your...
Items 14, 15, and 16 relating to the kiosk lease and license agreements downtown as it relates to my employment.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. On the consent agenda, for those of you who might be unfamiliar with it, we will be taking up all items 8 through 26 at one time on one vote. What I will do is start around the council and ask if there are items that need to be pulled, commented upon, or questions asked. I will then extend that courtesy to folks who are with us. Let me start with Mr. Newsom. Mr. Newsom, on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have comments on several items.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and make those.
On item 10, I just want to say I'm really happy to see that item on our agenda. The Community Action Board does wonderful work in our community administering city programs that lower barriers to community members attaining housing and to them retaining housing. And in particular, they administer the Emergency Eviction Prevention Program and the Security Deposit Program. Both of those programs are vital to promoting housing stability in our community, and I want to thank Director Mwali and Assistant City Manager Templeton for bringing those items forward, or that item forward. On item 12, I'm just really excited to see this item on our agenda as well. The Homeless Garden Project does wonderful work in our community, lifting up our most vulnerable citizens through providing them with jobs and job training. And it's recognized as one of the region's most successful programs for responding to homelessness. So really excited to see this item on our agenda, and I really want to thank my colleagues, Mayor Keely, Vice Mayor Golda, and Councilmember Brown for bringing this forward. On item 13, really happy to see this on our agenda as well. It moves us one step closer to the downtown library project becoming a reality. And as a result, our community having a world-class library, 124 units of affordable housing, and childcare center for working families. And I want to thank my...I want to thank Manager Borjuno and Director Lipscomb for bringing this item forward. And then finally, on items 14, 15, and 16, I'm really happy to see those items on our agenda. Each item deals with a contract for a restaurant to occupy one of our downtown kiosks. And I can't wait to watch each business be successful and contribute to a thriving downtown. And I want to thank Manager McCormick and Director Lipscomb for their work on each contract. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Brown?
I will just say ditto on the comments made by my colleague, Councilmember Newsom, and on all of those items. And I did want to also just give a shout out to the Homeless Garden Project and Ron Swenson for working with us to try to move this agenda item forward. We are really excited to be taking one more step towards the reality of the Homeless Garden Project having a permanent home. It's a site that is very suitable for agriculture, and we think this is an expeditious way forward. We so appreciate your efforts to get that permanent home and are glad to see this step being taken today. And also to the existing property owner, Mr. Swenson, for being, you know, very generous in working with the Homeless Garden Project to make it happen.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just associate myself with the comments made by my colleagues. There's a really...a lot of really great actions in our consent agenda this meeting, so I appreciate all of these coming forward. The only additional comment I would make is just the recognition and proclamation of our Small Business Saturday, which is really critical to the heartbeat of our community in Santa Cruz and just encouraging all of you, as you do your holiday shopping, to shop local and to celebrate our small businesses. So I'll leave it there since it's already been said in terms of the other items.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner?
Thank you. I also had brief comments on the same agenda items, and so for sake of time, I'll align myself with all the comments that were made on 10, 12, 13, 18, and acknowledging all of that great work. It's great to see that in the agenda. Thank you. And item number 11 is our gas-powered leaf blowers ordinance update, and I'm also in support of this item. And really, this has been a lot of work and really exciting work for the community and the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Calentari Johnson is recognized on the consent agenda.
Ditto. Thanks for all the great work.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
I do not have a lot to add, but I just would like to, like I do sometimes, acknowledge that there's four items, items nine, 10, 12, and 17 that are not insignificant contributions to addressing homelessness over several million dollars that the city's investing. And you guys know that I was part of the League of California Cities Public Safety Committee, and I'm really happy to see Prop 36 passed overwhelmingly across the state. And like Ms. Dubin brought up, some of the behaviors that we're seeing, despite all of the good work we're doing, are still unacceptable in our community. And so I'm hoping that along with all of this good work, that we'll start to see some work with law enforcement and at the state level in terms of helping address substance abuse disorder and mental health issues and kind of forcing people into changing some of their habits. Thank you.
Thank you. This would be the opportunity for anyone who wishes to comment on the consent agenda. Let me make clear how this works. So this is on the consent agenda. You will have a total You will have a total of two minutes, irrespective of how many items you want to comment on. So you have two minutes on the consent agenda. Good afternoon and welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keeley and Council. My name is Brian Shields. I'm a field representative with Carpenter's Local six-four-six. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, um, and be in council chambers. I just wanted to highlight again, uh, item thirteen, uh, the Downtown Library and Affordable Housing Development Project. I've been speaking on this since 2022, I think since Sandra was mayor here, and, um, and, uh, want to again highlight, you know, providing an opportunity for responsible contractors that pay a living wage no matter what project they are on, right? It's important that, that these are going to be prevailing wage jobs, it being attached to a library, so on and so forth, but the, the thing is, is that the contractor that does that work should, after the completion of this project, go to the next project and pay their workers the same amount. It shouldn't be a fluctuating scale. How are you supposed to plan, plan a family? How are you supposed to plan for housing? How are you supposed to plan a life? How are you supposed to have healthcare? How are you supposed to be established? How are you supposed to buy a car, invest in a community, pay for, uh, um, you know, go visit a mom and pop shop? If you don't know how much you're going to get paid next year, right? If it's just always fluctuating, if you're getting laid off, if you're getting, if you're going to, uh, a, 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 a project where you're paid back to maybe twenty-five dollars an hour, and then you go back to a prevailing wage job, if you're lucky, that's not the case. It's if you're lucky, right? If you're one of the, 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 you know, FBI, family, brothers, and in-laws, right? Then you get to go back to the prevailing wage job. With the Carpenter's Union, the, the folks are paid the same amount, no matter who they are, where they're working, it's the same exact pay. And, uh, and we, this, I look at this like an opportunity, right? Where it's, it, you could provide a co- uh, oppor- another opportunity for a contractor to come into this community, uh, and, um, provide that sustainable life, right? Uh, yeah, it'd be inappropriate for me to go further, there's, there's things I'd like to talk about elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for, uh, the meeting last week and our discussion generally on this topic. Good afternoon, sir. We have someone online. Mr. Ewing, please, please come forward. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, sir.
It is a good afternoon. Um, the rules seem to change every time I'm here. Going through the thing, after the oral communications, we had, uh, four proclamations, so we're skipping that. I've been publicly, it's, it's okay, you don't have to comment, it'll come up when it does. I've been publicly recorded, you know, between six and a half and nine and a half minutes because you were able to pull items off the consent agenda and speak on each of those items up to three minutes. Oh, I have the recordings, so the rules really seem to change. I mean, I don't know who the young lady is who's representing the city attorney, I don't know where Tony can dawdly.
Excuse me, excuse me. This is our chief deputy city attorney. She is not to be referred to as a young lady. This is our city attorney. Please proceed.
Pardon me, I meant no offense.
Proceed.
Okay. So, I could comment on the minutes, I want to comment on eleven, the, the leaf blowers. Some of those devices are horrifically loud, and you know, when people are so lazy as to put cement dust and other dangerous particulate matter into the air, it's abominable. I mean, I've been doing construction for almost forty years, I vacuum stuff, I use water. But as far as what the EPA standards, the extermination proliferation assassins, you know, when you look at all of the perfectly good diesel trucks that have been taken off because of ridiculous rules that you guys seem to follow like puppets, and it's really kind of depressing, you know, but it's understandable because this is the city of. You don't care about the people here. You guys were elected, but the city manager controls you. And so, yeah, I'm not really that happy, you shouldn't be that happy either. Some of the things that have come out of some of your mouths is horrific. You know, you guys are a corporation, you care about your stakeholders, and if the citizens really realized that this is a corporation, and I don't consider myself a worthless eater, I don't consider anybody a worthless eater. So you don't have to be happy with what I say, Mr. Keeley, just going to say it as politely as possible. And it sure seemed like a long minute, so I guess I was given three. That's fine, thank you very much.
Next person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting. Three, two.
Hello, um, Bradley Snyder, um, hang on, um, okay, uh, yeah, sorry, uh, almost ready to speak, but I guess here I go. Um, so, uh, the downtown library, um, housing, parking garage, you know, the, the Swiss Army Knife building that's going on, where the, uh, uh, I guess inevitably going in, you know, after all these other buildings have been built, eventually, finally, you're going to get to this one weird building. Now, um, I, I've, I've actually, uh, measured all of the, um, the square footage in the current library, and one thing that, you know, just arith- arithmetic, uh, uh, you know, leads me to suggest is that the new proposed library, uh, well, it's no longer a proposal, is it? Um, it's, it's actually less floor space than the current library. It's actually less square footage than the current library, which is astonishing, you know, it just shows how much, I want to say that, uh, that the development interests care about the library and the community, because that, 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 that parking lot is something that, um, I mean, I don't know, you know, there, there's another agenda item about the kiosks, and the kiosks were, were kind of a joke, they were kind of a laugh when they first built them in, uh, I think it was, uh, ninety, uh, nineteen ninety when they were built, and they were, they were kind of ridiculous compared to what the, the mall looked like before the earthquake. And to call them, uh, restaurants, you know, uh, they're, 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 you know, I don't know, um, they're, you know, I don't know, calling them an eatery or a restaurant or, you know, they're, they're tiny, and so, I don't know, it's, 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 it's hashing out definitions, uh, but, but one thing I think i- is, is sure and clear to me that, um, uh, the gentleman who spoke about the, the Carpenter's Union, one of the things that's not being addressed is, I, I know for a fact that the architects and, and, and the, the developers are from Southern California, they're from San Diego and Los Angeles, and a lot of the labor as well is not local. A lot of the development that's going on in downtown Santa Cruz is, is, is opportunism. And, uh, you know what, that might hurt somebody's feelings, I don't know, but I'm looking forward to the next mayoral election and asking anybody who may be running exactly, uh, how they feel about how intensively developed downtown Santa Cruz and, and what the ratio of, uh, the low-income units to the actual output, you know, of, of really, really expensive, really, really tiny units, what that ratio is like and, and what that means to the, the city of Santa Cruz and the people who live there. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Um, I've been involved with the downtown library affordable housing development project, uh, since about two thousand and sixteen, and I'm, just want to thank you for your support and something I'm really excited about moving forwards.
Thank you. Anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Keeley, Vice Mayor Golda, and members of council. My name's Doug Engfer. I serve on the board of the Homeless Garden Project. Some members of our team have joined me here today to express our deep gratitude to the council and staff for the strong support and clear direction expressed in item twelve on your consent agenda. In particular, we'd like to thank Mayor Keeley and Councilmember Brown for their patient and steadfast guidance here. You're all well aware of the pa- of project's longstanding efforts to establish a permanent home. I want to state clearly that the Homeless Garden Project is committed to making its home on these four acres so that we can continue and expand our good work, providing a hand up to employment and out of homelessness for the most vulnerable in our community, having worked with over a thousand folks over the years. The direction set on item twelve is the critical second step in our journey home. The first step we took last year in our purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Ron Swenson for these four acres. We feel blessed to live in a community and to be served by a council and city staff that see this as an opportunity to provide foundational support to make our efforts a continuing success, we, which will be a win for the community and for the Homeless Garden Project. Upon approval of this item, I, along with our board and staff, will work collaboratively and diligently with city staff and Mr. Swenson to, as swiftly as possible, transform our dream into reality. We recognize there's much work ahead and that there may be pitfalls along the way. That said, with your continued support, we will complete our journey home to Natural Bridges Farm. As always, thank you for your time, thoughtful consideration, and your service to our city.
Mr. Engfer, thank you very much. Mr. Swenson, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting, sir.
Good afternoon, council and, um, the public and the staff. I want to thank, uh, Mayor Keeley, uh, members of the city council who have worked hard with the Homeless Garden to bring this to this step. It's a critical step, and there's a lot more, uh, work to be done beyond this point. I want to say that, from the get-go, this program is consistent with my long-term objectives for this property, that I would like to see an integration of nature, nurture, and real estate development as classic sense with an emphasis on making this a very green project, including the four acres that I have made arrangements for the Homeless Garden, as well as the remaining property there. So again, thank you very much for staff and, uh, city council, their assistance in bringing this to this stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you. I'm Sarah Beck. I'm the executive director of Friends of the Santa Cruz Public Libraries. So glad to be with you today. As the Santa Cruz Public Library's nonprofit partner, the Friends support our libraries through fundraising, advocacy, and volunteerism. I'm here today really to share just a moment of Thanksgiving to you all, pun intended, um, and for your work here, and also just to express our enthusiasm and capacity to be of help. No matter what we're facing, our libraries provide a solution. Our libraries are democratic institutions that make our community more inclusive, more creative, more civically engaged, more tolerant, and more joyful. The Downtown Library and Affordable Housing Development Project fits our city's vision for a downtown that combines civic, residential, business, and cultural activities. At the center of this project, the downtown Santa Cruz Public Library is a hub of the entire ten-branch Santa Cruz Public Library system. Nine of our ten public library branches have been renovated, as you know, or rebuilt since 2016, just an incredible accomplishment, thanks to our community's Measure S tax dollars, and the Friends also contributed through the Realizing the Promise campaign and made significant contributions. Since reopening, all of the renovated and rebuilt branches have seen significant increases in use. Someone asked me yesterday what my favorite activity has been since becoming the executive director of Friends, and what I said was, it is being in the libraries and watching people enjoying and using these spaces. It truly is a joy to go into any one of these renovated and rebuilt spaces and see how many people are using the library, and no matter who you are, the library and whatever your interest or whatever you're trying to accomplish, the library is especially for you. And so that is a very special experience. Our community deserves an accessible, contemporary, safe, new downtown library. The Friends are incredible advocates and volunteers, and what the Friends discovered about themselves in the last eight years is that they're also powerfully capable fundraisers. We pledge our continued support to the downtown Santa Cruz Branch Library, and we sincerely thank you for every effort in moving this project forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and your colleagues, and the folks that you motivate to, uh, help out with our libraries. Thank you very, very much. Anyone else on the consent agenda online? Anybody else with us that wishes to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, matter is back before the body, the vice mayor is recognized. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, second by Councilmember Brown. Debate or discussion on the item, seen and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye, with the exception of items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Uh, Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion carries and so ordered. We are on item twenty-seven, there's a second reading and final adoption of ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-nineteen, amending chapter eighteen point four-one-point-zero-two-zero regarding appointments to various bodies. Is there a staff report?
We have no staff report for this item, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there questions and comments by members of the council? Anyone with us wish to comment upon the item? Seeing and hearing none, the matter is back before the body. Excuse me, we're conducting a meeting here, so please keep quiet until you leave the chambers. Thank you very much. On this item, sir.
No, it's not on this item, I have a point of order. I would like to go back to the supervisors' meeting, are you going to go over the proclamations in a timely manner, or is that being dropped?
The council will go through these items as indicated, they will come up around three-thirty or so.
That's perfect, I'm going to go to the board of supervisors, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Anyone else on the item? Matters before the body, pleasure the body.
I move approv-
Councilmember Brunner?
I move-
Moves?
Yes. I move approval of item twenty-seven, the second reading.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Newsom. Debate or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion carries and so ordered. We are on item twenty-eight, and this is an item relative to one nineteen Madrone Street in the city of Santa Cruz. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a master use permit and special use permit. There is a staff report. Mr. Bain, good afternoon, sir.
Ryan Bain, senior planner. Um, so, the, uh, the council is considering an appeal of a, oh, thank you, of a Planning Commission approval of a master use permit and special use permit to convert an existing brew pub, Woodhouse Brewery, to a high-risk alcohol outlet and to allow for expanded live entertainment and events. The subject parcel is a one-point-one acre site on the southwest corner of River and Madrone Street, just south of Highway One and River Street intersection. Uh, the commercial industrial site contains a number of buildings, uh, with a mix of uses, including offices, warehouses, and the subject woodhouse brewing operating within a approximately almost four thousand square foot commercial building on the west side of the parcel, which is indicated by the yellow there. Just a little background, uh, the brewery, the zoning, city zoning was here in two thousand and seventeen, approved an administrative use permit for the beer manufacturing facility. In two thousand and nineteen, they approved, uh, to allow the establishment of a low-risk alcohol outlet for a restaurant with beer and wine service with the brewery, and the current, uh, use permit allows for, um, two thousand six-hundred-and-sixty square feet of the existing building to be utilized as beer manufacturing and storage, while nine-hundred-and-ninety square feet is open to the public for eating and drinking. Uh, in July of twenty, in July of twenty-three-
Mr. Bain, ju- just for a second. This always happens with us, you have such a soft voice, if you could just move that microphone a little.
Sorry about that?
Yeah, wonderful, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, no worries. In fact, I have two things up here. There we go, managing that. So, yeah, so in July of twenty-three, a formal complaint was received by the city regarding operations at the brewery, uh, and a code enforcement case was opened for investigation. The complaint involved loud music, uh, coming from the brewery several nights a week. Um, this was due to amplified entertainment that was occurring on outdoor stages there. Um, uh, the city staff has been working with the brewery owners to resolve this issue over the past few months, and it was determined that the owner should apply for a special use permit and master use permit to allow outdoor entertainment and events at the site. So, um, this expansion of use would elevate the brew pub from a low-risk alcohol, alcohol outlet to a high-risk alcohol outlet pursuant to our zoning code. Um, if, the application was heard by the Planning Commission on September nineteenth, where it was- The application was heard by the Planning Commission on September 19th, where it was approved 6-0. And on September 30th, an appeal was received, appealing the application to the city council. So, the, this is kind of a basic site plan of just outside the brewery building. The event stage borders that 2,000-square-foot outdoor seating area with a former parking lot proposed for incidental community spaces for events throughout the year. The applicant is not required to provide off-street parking for the use because the subject site is within half-mile of a major transit stop. That being said, there are approximately 32 spaces on the site that are shared amongst the various uses. And additionally, in Madrone Street, has a number of on-street spaces that are regularly utilized by brewery patrons. So, a noise study was prepared by Salter Incorporated Noise Consultants to verify that events would operate within the limits of the city's noise ordinance. The noise consultants visited the site to measure the existing ambient noise levels and to quantify the noise levels from the brewery's sound system at the preferred operational conditions. In order to meet the ordinance criteria, it was determined that the sound system cannot exceed an average hourly level of 79 dB at the center of the event area for a maximum of two hours between 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. within a 24-hour period. Additionally, no amplified music speech is allowed between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So, the study recommends that noise be monitored during events to maintain compliance with the ordinance, and that the stage and sound system should be oriented to the north away from the nearest residence to the southwest. So, operating within these parameters, the study states that the use will meet the city of Santa Cruz noise ordinance criteria, and implementation of the recommendations of the noise study has been included as a condition of approval. So, the appeal that was received from the property owners that own the property just to the south of the subject parcel. The appellant's assert that the Planning Commission was in error on what the zoning is on the property. Their property stating that it's not just commercial, it is CT, commercial thoroughfare. While the subject adjacent property zoning did not necessarily come up in the Planning Commission discussion, it was acknowledged that the subject parcel is not in a residential area and is currently surrounded by commercial and industrial uses. The appellant's are correct that the zoning does allow residential, and staff's interpretation of the code is that CT zone should be developed predominantly for commercial uses. In our code, it states it's predominantly for commercial uses such as retail, service, and amusement, while residential is a secondary use to be incorporated above commercial uses, kind of similar to our downtown central business district. So, this area would be considered, would not be considered residential area, but rather an active commercial area that allows residential to be included with the commercial uses. Additionally, the appellant's assert that the noise study that was prepared by Salter was not done correctly specifically when taking measurements to determine the ambient noise level. So, the appellant's recently provided a noise report prepared by a separate noise consultant, stating that Salter's original measurements likely included three amplified music events at the locations, which would skew the ambient noise levels that were prepared by Salter. Staff has reached out to Salter in recent days, and they have confirmed that nothing in the data suggests that live music events occurred during those measurement periods. Additionally, as part of the appeal, the appellant's asserted that the Planning Commission is in error by failing to establish a monitoring system and schedule to ensure compliance. As part of the Planning Commission approval, there was a condition number 27 that requires the applicant to submit a maintenance and management plan, which addresses, among other things, noise measurements. So, staff recommended this condition to clarify that a qualified noise consultant must review and provide recommendations on the proposed management plan to help ensure that the proposed approach meets the requirements of the noise report. And staff has not received a management plan as of the writing, or I should say, as of this council meeting, but a plan which includes specific noise monitoring will be required as part of the management plan before any live outdoor and entertainment event can occur at the site. Also, through the course of reviewing the appeal, staff determined that conditions that call out specific details regarding noise monitoring as part of the management plan would be appropriate. So, as staff is recommending to the council, add the following condition of approval should the appeal be denied. That would basically require that a third-party noise consultant do a monitoring on the site in the coming year to make sure that the use is meeting the requirements of our noise ordinance. So, with that being said, it's recommended that the city council make a motion to adopt a resolution denying the appeal, thereby upholding the Planning Commission's acknowledgement of the environmental determination and approval of the master use permit and special use permit based on the findings listed in the resolution and the conditions of approval. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. For those of you that have not been here for an appeal before, let me set how this will be conducted today. We're sitting in essentially a kind of quasi-judicial capacity here. You can't think about the last three items we've had. We had item 26, that was approving a contract for some construction. We sort of act in an executive capacity. The item just before this, item 27, we were approving an ordinance. We were sitting in our legislative capacity. Now, we're sitting in a sort of quasi-judicial capacity. So, what we will be doing, now that we have heard the staff report, is we will give the appellant, which are Guy and Stacy Mitchell, 20 minutes. They will be followed by William Moxum for 15 minutes to speak, who is the applicant. There will then be questions from council members. There will then be public comment, up to three minutes per person. And we will take folks who are here, and folks who are online will toggle back and forth. At that point, the appellant, Guy and Stacy Mitchell, will have five minutes to rebut at the very end, and then the matter will be back before the body and we will make a determination. Let me now, at this time, recognize Guy and Stacy Mitchell for their 20-minute opening, and good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll make everyone happy. We're not going to take the full 20 minutes. My name is Chris Bossy of B.O.S.C.I.A., and I've recently been retained to represent Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell in this appeal. And I want to start off by saying, I wish I was involved in the case a little earlier when the appeal got filed, but I'm here handling what has been filed and hopefully reaching a resolution that's satisfactory to everyone. So, I'll start at the outset by saying that I believe my clients are willing to withdraw the appeal. And I spoke to Mr. Bain on the phone about that today for the first time. There are two residual concerns they have, and I believe Mr. Bain may have just addressed one of them by his proposed amendment. So, I'll jump to that first. The, Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell did engage a sound expert to take some measurements and determine whether or not the Salter study met the city's code. We provided a copy of that study, we'll call it the Intertech Study, to Mr. Bain on Friday. I also have extra copies here in case the council would like to see it. But essentially, the Intertech Study took issue with just two parts.
Why would we do that? Take one of those and present it to the clerk, then it'll be entered in the record.
Thank you so much.
This won't be taken out of your time. There we go. Please proceed.
Thank you. And the two issues were, the first and most important was about the ambient noise level. And if you think about it, I'm not a sound expert. I suspect many of you are not either. If you think about what the ambient noise level is, it's just what's normal. And everything we do in terms of this permit is going to be measuring from that normal to decide what's allowable. And the concern that was articulated, and I understand Mr. Bain has looked into it a little bit, but we haven't given him enough time, is that some of the measurements taken by Salter may have been during 24-hour periods where there were live events, which would have skewed the reading on the ambient noise. Again, I'm getting into this so late in the game, I wasn't there. So, my simple request would be to give us a moment to pause and confer with the experts about who's right on that issue, about what level ought this council to set the ambient noise level at. The reason that's important is because any future effort to enforce the noise ordinance, whether by my clients or frankly anybody around, right, is going to be a function of what this council sets as that ambient noise level. We just want to make sure it's set right, and that wouldn't preclude anyone at the brewery from having events. The second issue, which I don't believe was addressed by Mr. Bain, was about where the measurements ought to be taken. And again, the Intertech Study took a little issue with where Salter took their measurements, and that really matters if you're measuring from the center of the stage where the music's being projected versus measuring at the property line, where the affected parties might be. Again, I'm not an expert in measurement, but apparently it matters. So, what we were hoping for is a brief pause to allow the experts to confer, maybe even a pause of a couple weeks. And when I spoke to Mr. Bain today, he graciously informed me about another option, which would be to have a third party come in and kind of, another expert to say whether these two experts got it right. And if I understood his proposed amendment correctly, he was suggesting that that happen anyway over the course of the next year, that whatever the standard is that gets set by this body today, that there is a chance to revisit it over the next year with a third party that might review. And my clients then would have input, and I could help shape that input or bring more light than heat. And if that were the case, if I understood Mr. Bain's proposal correctly, I think that'd be welcome. But the most important message I want to communicate on behalf of the Mitchells is that they want to see their neighbor business succeed. They're happy to see the growth in business in the area. They want to allow their tenants to succeed. And so, we want to find a happy middle ground where everybody can move past this. And again, like I said, I realize that the appeal is about a dozen different issues. I'd be willing to withdraw those at this time if we could just take a slight pause to address those other questions. I think I delivered in well under 20 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Well under 20 minutes.
So, certainly if there's any questions, me, I'll be here to answer them, but if you want to move to the next group, I'm happy for that, too.
Thank you, sir. This will be the opportunity for Mr. Moxum for 15 minutes. Good afternoon.
Hi there. Thank you very much. So, oh, yeah. So, this is Joe. I have an audio expert here. Probably the most qualified that we could possibly find within, you know, 500-mile radius. I totally understand the concern. I have been in contact with many of the businesses in the area. As I stated many times, have gone around to the other businesses to see how loud it was and to ask if there was anything that I could do or start later, you know? When we were doing it, we started at roughly 5:00, and I found out that that was a very bad time. And I found out that most people close around 6:00 or 7:00. And so, we started doing it at 7:00. In addition, the closest neighbor, Santa Cruz Core Fitness, we've been in contact the whole time, and I've offered to help mitigate the sound in their building and offered to help put a proper air conditioner in the back room and to also rebuild the back wall so that it can mitigate the sound properly because it's not correct. But I think that pausing to, you know, pausing for several weeks to get any, to, you know, to hold this up any further is punitive to our business, and that's about it. And so, I brought a sound expert to talk about it. And I really think we could, you know, I don't think it ever had to come to this, really. You know, as you heard, they want to see us succeed. I mean, we have never spoken. I have no idea why. I've spoken with everybody, and the Mitchells, you know, never wrote or came over and said anything to me directly, and so there's been no ability for me to try to, you know, compromise. So, yeah, I mean, if you want to speak about possible monitoring and about the reports that were done.
Hi, my name's Joe Bryan. I've been a longtime audio professional in this area. I started a couple of companies in this area, and I work for Apple at this point on audio products. The first thing I noticed when I looked at the complaint and the acoustic reports that are associated with it were, they were quite similar, actually. The measurements that were done by the Intertech were done over the back fence, which I believe is one of their quests. The second part is to move from the center of the performing area to the perimeter. And the physical reality is, it doesn't actually matter. The extrapolation of the values of the sound pressure source can be made simply by knowing the distance and the orientation of the microphones. So, I'd like to point out, in the Intertech report, that the microphone, which is a hemispherical microphone, is a standard Class 1 sound pressure level meter, is supposed to be oriented straight up. That's the hemisphere. And so, this measurement that was done in this report is actually skewed by about plus 3 dB just by the virtue of the way the measurements were made. So, I think the supposition that this report sort of precludes the quality of the existing report done by Salter is a little bit specious, I think. So, I would encourage a third party to review these and come up with a proper recommendation. The other aspect of the noise aspect itself is that there's a physical property called the inverse square law, where the sound pressure level, SPL, drops off at 6 dB for every doubling of the distance. So, the measurements made by Salter in the middle of the listening area can be extrapolated and correlate directly to the measurements made by Intertech with their bias and the distance difference. So, these two reports correlate. And so, I don't think there's any debate as to, you know, the numbers may be off in terms of what they're being reported here, but the physical presence is still making the same measurements. So, as far as the implication that there's data skewing, I think the city has already stated that there wasn't any data, in the measuring data, that suggests that. Yeah, and the other aspect I think is important is that the parcel that the Mitchells own is in a, is referred to as a light industrial area. Their APN 00822-04, which is the property directly to the south, per section 1310-341B of the city ordinance is. That specific zoning, 310, 3.10.341, Section A, Part 2, the purposes of light industrial state quote "to protect areas appropriate for industrial use from intrusion by dwellings and other inharmonious uses." And then further, Section E1 of that states that the restricted hours of operation are 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., unless special permits are applied for, and businesses cannot be open past 6:00 p.m. And then, there is a provision within Section 1310.342, which is uses in industrial districts. Section D provides a table that provides exceptions to the basic rules. And the only exception in this zoning area is called a, quote, manager's unit. And this requires an administrative use permit, called an AUPA, which stipulates that a public notice must be filed, including a, quote, onsite manager, sorry, under contract describing compensation and duties, and that the manager's unit has to be associated with the business. And, quote, "no other live, work, and use are allowed." So, reading between the lines there, I think it's safe to say that the noise complaint itself shouldn't really have been taken forward because the applicants here technically aren't supposed to be on the property during the time when the music is playing. So, that's an interesting development. And that's what I have to say so far. The other aspect I'd like to bring up is the impact to the community. We went through the numbers. Will has said that they have lost about $175,000 with the business due to this shutdown. They've spent $7,000 on a noise study, another $7,000 on a permit request, and they were not able to pay out roughly $70,000 to artists- to artists and associated performers uh related to the business, which is about a quarter of a million dollars, a little over a quarter of a million dollars. So I think extending this shutdown has a delirious effect on their business, which I think is unreasonable. That's what I have to say.
Uh, I think the last thing, I mean, as far as quarterly monitoring, um, I just, I think it's interesting because we we did this, right? We we didn't do it right. Nobody knew had to really move forward during COVID. Everything just turned outside, right? Everything turned inside out. And uh we did it according to um uh Carter Jones properly. I mean, he was happy. He never had to send a patrolman over. We were stopping at ten. I looked up the sequel laws, the curfew. We were trying to keep it down. Um, and uh, you know, at what point do we go under your good graces and then start going crazy and being louder when when we were doing it properly without any any kind of um uh, you know, possible punishment, right? You, there was no permit to take away. And so if we have our permit, I I don't know why we wouldn't even be to try to be better in the community and to be friends with everybody and to try to compromise and and do what what's right. So the the impact that a quarterly monitoring um or monitoring at all would be is the Salter report for us was about, you know, eight thousand dollars. And if, and that was about five hours on uh onsite, which is what they'd have to do, they'd have to come out for about five hours and then monitor and then write another report, eight thousand dollars. So we're gonna do that four times a year. I mean, that's somebody's wage. That's, I mean, it's just kind of punitive. I don't understand why we would have to do that without first trying to just monitor ourselves with um people like Joe Bryan. And I mean, I can, I, there's tons of audio files around here. I mean, I've also understand everything that was happening. I've been, you know, working with audio and recording for thirty years myself. Why we wouldn't be able to just try to monitor ourself ourselves? And uh, and then if there were further complaints and issues that were, you know, that arose, then do something punitive like make us pay forty thousand dollars to do this quarterly? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. This is, it's not small business. That's it.
Thank you, sir. This is the opportunity for staff to, excuse me, for members to ask questions. Uh, let me see if there are questions folks want to ask at this stage. Seeing here none, this will be the opportunity for the public to comment. You will have up to three minutes to comment. In the event that there are folks who want to comment online, we'll take one person who's here, then we'll go online, then one person here and so on. Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting.
Hi, thank you. My name's Jamie and I'm the owner of Santa Cruz Core Fitness and Rehab. And contrary to the title, we're a medical facility and we do massage and acupuncture that requires a calm and centered space. And we are open seven days a week, Saturday and Sunday, from uh eight to five. And then we've been open for fifteen years um at the same location. And Monday through Friday, we've are open from eight to nine and maybe earlier by appointment for fitness. So while I do really appreciate sincerely Williams, um, he's telling the truth. He has communicated with us and we have not seen um the fruits of that communication yet, but we hope to. Uh, my biggest concern is also uh loss of wages. Um, since the sound permitting, um, since they've been able to do outdoor music, it has ranged from three PM, five PM. Um, it hasn't necessarily always started at six PM. And we have seen over the last year decline in our Friday nights. Uh, the amount of money that we make on a Friday night just in our rooms is around nineteen hundred dollars. So if you put that and you multiply that, that's over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, if we were to have music every night of the week, that would be four hundred and eighty-five around thousand dollars that we'll be losing. So while I really appreciate uh business that is trying to, and I've patroned that business, while I don't drink beer, I have eaten there. And I've had my child play at that uh location because I, one of the owners is my son's age. Um, I I don't think it's right nor fair that one business should have precedence over the other. I mean, if you want to talk about seniority, we've been there for fifteen years and that's not what we're trying to get at. What we want is an amic- amicable uh uh resolution. And my concern is the um, the implementation and uh that it's actually going to be followed. When there is loud music, the like we can hear it in our building, whether there's a sound uh ordinance or a sound uh study, it doesn't matter to the people who are in the room unable to relax and are now having a stress response because of the heavy bass. So um, I just, you know, we are a part of the community. We don't have donated over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our um fifteen years of business. And um, we would really love to work amicably with the with William and his business to create some type of solution. But I really um, I'm looking to you all as City Council to create some type of regulation so that um it is something that can be followed. And it's not just like every day of the week after six because it'll, I mean, it might make me have to move and then close my business down. And we've serviced over ninety thousand people in this community and it would just crush me, you know? Our our mission is to help as many people as possible reach their optimal health. And if I can't do that, then my purpose is not there.
Thank you for being here. Do we have someone online? We'll take the person online and then we'll be right with you, sir. Good afternoon, person online. Welcome to the council meeting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, uh, Mayor Keely, for the opportunity to speak today. And thank you, City Council, for considering this issue. Uh, my name is Chandra Donahue. I'm a nonprofit project manager and also volunteer of City of Santa Cruz and a regular attendee at Woodhouse Brewery for the last few years since they've been open. And I wanted to just speak about the value of music and dance in our community and having a space available for that for people in the community. Um, as you are aware, the impact, the economic impact of the arts in our community is a thirty-eight million dollar uh revenue building business in City of Santa Cruz alone. And the mission of Woodhouse, as it's stated on their LinkedIn page, is that we wish to make ourselves an asset and a benefit to the local community to support the arts and make a difference. And to be a place where we may stand and unite for what's right and what's humane. And above all else, we desire to share laughs and smiles while we accomplish these missions. They have done more than their due diligence in struggling through a pandemic to operate in a space that is zoned for commercial um interests. And the business owners that are working there, as stated previously, seem to be um operating outside of the hours of business that they um are able to during the hours um that Woodhouse operates, that is after business hours. And they are closed at ten o'clock, which is when the noise curfew ends. So as the sound technician you spoke earlier mentioned, it seems that this whole appeal is um is more of an effort to shut down a business than to actually collaborate, as evidenced by the fact that they have not shown up at these meetings. They have not tried to negotiate with Mr. Moxam. Um, I think that speaks for itself and speaks volumes. And I believe that um this entire, you know, the we, you've already voted on this issue once and that the fact that one person can appeal and shut down the business again and hurt their business is um, is really a travesty. So I just want to urge you to support the arts in our community and the community that this has built um in for all the people of Santa Cruz um and do the right thing here. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
I'm one of the uh, one of the owners of the Santa Cruz Core Business. And we appreciate um Mr. Moxam's uh efforts to negotiate and um and work with us. And he's been um consistent in reaching out to us and we're very grateful for that. Uh, we're hoping for a win-win um today. We're hoping for some sort of resolution to come together and and find a way that we can all coexist harmoniously. And we see the good um that Woodhouse is doing in the community and we're very grateful for that. And we hope to continue to do good through our business as well.
Thank you, sir. Next person online. Good afternoon and welcome. Good afternoon, person online.
Sorry, it takes a few moments to unmute. Hi, uh Bradley Snyder. I'm a fan of Woodhouse. Uh, the only time I've ever been there, uh, you know, during an event, I was making balloon animals. It was a birthday party. It didn't seem particularly loud and obnoxious. Um, I've looked at uh on uh, you know, just online maps of the area. There's a, there there are a few residences that are a little bit nearby, but otherwise it's mostly businesses. I I I'm I'm uh, I'm uh, I'm of the opinion that it's a, it's, I mean, within limits, they should, they should have the right to have uh live events and live music. Um, I think it'd be a gesture um to uh, you know, to some of the people who uh are earned, uh, you know, like an offer to uh help financially with uh putting in um sound barriers. Um, I used to live in a soundstage on on Pacific Avenue. And um, and it was uh, so I would have to wait until the bands went home to go to sleep. But um, you know, there's sound, uh, you know, there's, there's all kinds of acoustic uh, uh, there's materials that you can put up that can uh, you know, make it more tolerable. Um, and just keeping the decibels below a hundred and hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen. Um, that's when uh, you know, nature starts to become alarmed uh because of all the the noise. Anyhow, um, that's, that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome to the council meeting.
See you again. Uh, my name's Mike Ellison. I'm uh associated with the business as well. And um, I was grateful to receive um in the mail a little notice about this meeting um because in the previous round of things, we never received any kind of notice about the planning uh for this permit or anything. Um, we've had like, I wanted to reiterate what has been said already, that we've had very productive conversations with the Woodhouse people. And we're very sympathetic to having a another music venue in the town. Um, they seem like really good people. Um, but also in that business at Santa Cruz Core, we we want to be able to conduct our business as well. And I know there's been um, we we have been afraid actually to say anything because when um the landlord of the property mentioned that he was going to appeal, that we were mentioned in the appeal, and we began to receive uh hate mail and um threats of boycotting our business and that kind of thing from some of the customers at Woodhouse. And so that was really frightening. So we were like hesitant to say anything about our issue regarding trying to have some accommodation there. And they reached out to us and said, yeah, that's not good. Uh, we appreciated they were, they were taking that posture. And we're, our main concern is if we can remediate any kind of impact on our business, we would have no problem whatsoever with uh whatever they want to do over there. Um, and there sounds like there's some ways to do that. Um, it is a brick wall that there, that's, it's, I don't know what's happening there, but the brick wall vibrates and creates the sound through the wall, a brick wall. It's like, it's a good six inches thick. Um, so it's, or maybe ten inches. It's law, it's thick. And so it's not like um, that's a preventive. There has to be some other measure that can be done to limit the impact on the sound and the business. And um, you know, I look forward to being, going there, listening to music, what have you. And I know in the community, I have another office across the street. And as a former band member, I know in a venue like that, it's a constant struggle for the venue owner to battle the bands who always want to play loud. They, if you turn them down, their inclination is to always turn up. And then they have to go over there and they have to say, hey, guys, we got to turn it down. And then they have to go back. And then this is a constant battle that goes on with venue owners and music. It's just built in. So I just want there to be some way of being able to regulate it that's official so that we're not having to continue to to say things about it. We do, we want to be able to just have the problem be resolved and never have to think about it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Another person online?
No one online.
No one online. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Shannon Marero and I wanted to speak um on behalf of Woodhouse about the health benefits. Um, I've been a physician in this community for around just over six years. And I just want, I just wanted to speak both directly about the direct things that Woodhouse has been doing for the community and then indirectly what um Woodhouse has been doing to improve the health of this community. Uh, directly, Woodhouse has given their time, their energy, their support, uh their space to help migrant farm workers, the health of migrant farm workers, a community that needs more support. Frankly, um, our backbone, our backbone economy is based on this group. And so I'm just really grateful that Woodhouse has put, you know, so much time and energy into supporting this group. Um, and then also it's just a community space. It's a space where people can come together. And we know that there's huge benefits, both when we speak from morbidity and mortality in terms of people coming together, connection, uh, community. And um, you know, on a personal level, I'm a mom. I have young children and we've enjoyed coming to Woodhouse's events. And so I think my concern is, is that if we take measures that are punitive, that other businesses are going to look and say, oh, that's what happens, you know? That's what happens. This, we don't, we can't incur a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar, you know, fees. And so if we make a situation that is not, you know, supporting Woodhouse, then, you know, all of the health benefits that we have seen in terms of the time and energy that they have put into supporting marginalized groups, uh, the health of marginalized groups and building connection, I I think that it really speaks to what we stand for as a community. And so my question is, is that, you know, community, connection, health? Or, you know, what, what is it? What do we want to support? And I think that there is a way to come together and to create a situation that supports businesses, kind of like a compromise without being financially punitive. Um, but yes, um, I am grateful to Woodhouse and everything that they have done for my patients and the most marginalized folks in this community, especially during the pandemic. But they continue even today to support the health of migrant farm workers.
Thank you. We'll take the next person who is uh online. We'll be right with you, sir. Next person online. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Yeah, hello?
Yep.
Hello, my name is Lynn Dunn.
Good afternoon. We can hear you. Yes.
Um, I, my name is Lynn Dunn. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, council members, I did send you uh uh a no- a notice today. I hope that you got it. Did you get my uh communication?
This is your opportunity to testify, so please proceed.
Oh, okay. Um, I have been a customer at um Woodhouse Brewery for five years. Um, I've taken my husband um in his eighties. I've taken my neighbor, um, professor. And what drew us to Woodhouse was that during COVID, it was outside. And um, many of us need to some stress reduction and we could go there and be safe. Um, my husband could literally sit in the car and listen to the music and um have the food. And uh, he was perfectly safe. Um, two weekends ago, there was a a blind customer there dancing and enjoying the venue. Um, the parking out there is free and it's well lit. And I know um the owners make sure everything is cleaned up after. I think it's a great place to keep um that commercial zone uh, you know, uninhabited by um homeless, et cetera. Um, I just think it's such a great venue for for seniors and family. Uh, Will and Tug and and have the families invited and the dogs. And nonprofit um venues come and showcase there. So I really feel it's just an open, wide, positive opportunity. And in terms of the owner talking about the other businesses in the area, um, my colleague and I drove around and really, I don't understand what the issue is. Um, the businesses are closed by eight and if they're open a little bit after- Um, the businesses are closed by eight, and if they're open a little bit after, it's really not an issue. I, I don't understand why the appeal went forward, uh, on, on those points. But I just want to let you know, as a customer and a community member, it's been so helpful for all of us to be able to go somewhere that's safe and healthy. And these owners are onsite all of the time. They're not vacant or giving it over to somebody else. Thank you very much for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Sir, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, my name is Jace, and, uh, first and foremost, I'd like to bid everyone here peace.
Thank you.
Uh, I love being a part of this community. I'm from Brooklyn, New York originally. I've been back and forth here to Santa Cruz for about 25 years, uh, living here full-time for about 12 years now. I am a DJ. I often play at Woodhouse Brewery. Uh, I'm called DJ Monk Earl. Uh, I do an event called Afro Beats Night Santa Cruz, where I feature African music, pop music, uh, music of the diaspora. And it's free, open to the public. Uh, anyone here, you're, you're welcome to come. Uh, anytime we're over at Woodhouse or at Abbott Square, uh, I'd like to invite any of the owners of the other businesses, uh, the Mitchells, whoever, if you want to come through, it's all love here. This is all about community. This event is called Afro Beats Night Santa Cruz. And so I definitely want to see and invest it in us coming to terms. Uh, everyone getting what it is they want. I heard, uh, the gentleman mention the wall rattling, uh, and that Will mentioned that there's, you know, there's been an attempt to, uh, mitigate that by way of some construction. Um, there seems to be things that haven't been tried before, you know, coming with, you know, pen and paper to, uh, city council and, you know, peeling and lodging complaints and what have you. Again, I, I'm from Brooklyn, New York, and before leaving New York, I never knew you could even make a noise complaint. That's straight up, like, uh, and so, yeah, and I'm loud, you know, um, I come, I'm the one that come in with the, the, the subwoofers and everything. But, um, like I said, everyone's invited. It's all love. Uh, thank you very much for hearing me. Peace.
Thank you, sir. We're going to take the next person online, then we'll be right with you. Person online. Good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um, my name is Emily, and I own a business in the Old Sash Mill, so we are neighbors to Woodhouse Brewery. Um, and I just want to say that I love what they're doing, and I'm happy that they're playing music. Um, we're happy to see life kind of briefed into our little neighborhood here. We don't have a lot going on, and I think it's a really good thing. Uh, we do have a lot of apartments and condos and things that are coming into Santa Cruz. And I think the more places that we can gather in Santa Cruz, the better. Um, I also feel like somebody else touched a point on this where when you have something going on in the neighborhood, and there's life, and there's light, and there's music, um, it kind of has a tendency to keep out some of these unwanted visitors that we, that we want, we don't want in our neighborhood. So, and that's all I have for you. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting. Thank you.
I'm Michelle Murphy, um, a local resident, um, energy efficiency consultant, and, uh, own Mountain Music Productions. I am also a singer in two bands and a songwriter, and I'm a big supporter of the arts. Um, I was here in September when this room was packed full of people, and a lot of support came out for Woodhouse. It's an amazing place, uh, for the community. It sounds like there's some things that need to be worked out. Um, it, from everything I've heard, they're willing. And willingness is huge. If you're willing to sit down with your neighbors and work things out, um, everyone can be happy. The entire country could benefit from this sort of situation right now. Um, it's crucial that people are not disturbed. And it's crucial that people feel safe and can enjoy music and dancing and joy. Uh, after the pandemic, people were depressed. They were stuck in their homes. They were not with their communities, and they suffered mentally and physically. Um, I put on shows at the Veterans Hall quite often, and I have a decibel reader. It costs me fourteen dollars to buy. And I walk around the room and I make sure that the decibels are correct. It wasn't hard. Um, and I'm not an engineer or a tech, but I'm able to use this little thing. It just has two buttons. So, um, I really hope that the true vibe of Santa Cruz is going to come to the surface here because this is a vibrant town. Uh, music and community is so important. Um, big property development companies is not our vibe at all. It, although you wouldn't know it if you drove down, uh, Pacific Avenue recently, but there's room for everyone, right? Um, our property values are going up, but we have to remember the artists and the people who love art and music because they're what makes Santa Cruz cool. And I really appreciate you guys hearing this, uh, stuff for the second time and giving us all a chance to get up and speak out. I really hope that they can find a way to have safe outdoor music and dancing and love and peace at the Woodhouse Brewing and Blending. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Other person online? Nobody online. Welcome. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
I'm not good at public speaking. Uh, my name's Sophie Slossberg. I am a local small business owner. I grew up here, so this is the first time I've ever gotten up and spoken. Um, but I'm a neighbor. I'm in the Sash Mill, so I walk by both these businesses all the time. I hear them. Um, and we go to Woodhouse often. It's a great place. I bring my son there. I feel safe there. Um, it has definitely brought a level of safety, I would say, into the Old Sash Mill. We have, with the railroad tracks running through, a large homeless population. Um, and I'm often leaving at night, hearing some music, knowing people are around. I feel much safer. Um, I would argue that the appeal seems like, I know now they're going back on this, but they were saying they wanted to build an apartment complex that would devalue that. Um, if you look at other businesses, like downtown, we have music free at Abbott Square. We have the outside. I haven't seen them have to go through this process. That's financially debilitating to a small business. Um, we have other businesses nearby. Shanty Shack does music outside as well. Again, haven't seen them have to go through this. Um, so if anything, it seems like that's bringing value downtown. Otherwise, I don't know why that would be allowed to continue to go on without this process as well. Um, I understand the sound is affecting Core Fitness. I didn't realize that, and that is sad. But it does also seem like it's a light industry, um, area. So you have Sash Mill, you have other businesses. Most of the businesses are closed by five or six. Um, I hope that they can mediate something with the sound. Um, but again, it is an industrial area. Um, it's not coming from a noise complaint from a resident. It's coming from a small business owner, another small business owner, which is really, um, honestly upsetting to see two small businesses kind of go at each other. They weren't here at this last hearing. I understand it sounds like, um, they didn't receive the notices, but all the other businesses in the area did. I'm not sure. They waited till the last day to make their appeal. We have one appeal. And now there's only, you know, a few people here today. It feels like they're trying to shut down another small business, and that, to me, is the most upsetting thing. So I really hope that the council will hear what, what Woodhouse is bringing and doing for the community and hear both sides, but find a middle ground that's acceptable and financially doable for a small business.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Mayor Keely and fellow council members. Thank you for the opportunity to have a public, um, address this. And my name's John Schumacher. I had an opportunity to meet, uh, Will Moxon and then several of the other co-owners of Woodhouse Brewery right at the beginning of COVID or just before COVID. And then through COVID, we, uh, commiserated on how to survive as a small business. And, you know, fortunately, you kind of have to ebb and flow in, in changing times. And, um, from everything I've gathered, either visiting or being in the neighborhood, and a lot of these other people had also mentioned it, it's a place you actually feel safe at. Um, my wife and our family, we very rarely go downtown anymore, whereas at Woodhouse, I feel like it's a oasis or a light or a beacon in a busy semi-industrial area where other local people either getting out of, out of their, their workspace or, uh, residential neighbors that are nearby come and you're meeting, you know, new people up in the, up in the valley. But if I owned a commercial piece in a semi-industrial area, I wouldn't expect someone else to change, uh, their scenario or situation. Um, I would love to have them as, as neighbors, as commercial neighbors, as, either as a property owner or someone who would be renting because their space is always clean. It's always kept up. The fact that they are active, you know, they do have a business and they're onsite conscientious as owners differs greatly from where I've traveled throughout the United States, all around the world, very similar type of situations, having to visit restaurants and brew pubs when I travel. And, uh, I've see, I mean, they're, to me, they're in the top 10% of echelon, you know, culturally and, uh, with the concern about their neighborhood and, uh, the people that affect them. So. I'm not sure why a place that has not been developed yet for residential space, this can't be, where, where the permit could be permitted for them to do what they're doing, and I think they're already doing it responsibly, wouldn't be an issue that would come up if they violated that until these residents are able to purchase and move into that residential space. I'm, I'm kind of, just kind of missing a construct here, but that's, uh, for you guys to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just need to do a little bit of a time check here. Uh, how many folks, I'm assuming everybody in line is testifying on this item. Let me see if there, uh, if you are not in line, are there other folks who are going to testify? So it is the people who are in line. Very good. Thank you for that. Please come forward. Welcome. Good afternoon. Certainly.
Uh, my name's John Cott. I'm a audio engineer. I've worked professionally in the industry for 25 years, and now I'm retired. I mix bands around town. Um, my thoughts on this are that it's an oops moment, that we have let this go to where, uh, well, let, let me backtrack. So band, band management is the most important part of this. Getting the bands to be within a certain decibel range from the beginning and monitoring that is what's completely gone out the door. And this isn't just at Woodhouse. Um, this is Abbott Square. This is outside venues that are happening all around, way above 100 dB. When you're at a rock concert and there's thousands of people there in front of a house, 100 dB is usually limit. Some of these small venues are going way over 100. And that is way over what hurts the human ear. It's not necessary to enjoy a band at those levels. And we can bring these bands down. If you bring these bands down to an enjoyable level, okay? Um, this problem will go away. If we can get this down to 80 dB in a courtyard the size of Woodhouse, everyone can hear that band. Everyone will enjoy that band. Um, and it's just a real oops moment. We've just, uh, we've allowed everything to get way too loud. And, uh, nobody's been paying attention, really. So, uh, the other thing is that if you find a cap that you can get to, say 85 dB, there's, uh, decibel meters that hook to a power source, which actually just shut the power off. And you, then the power went down. You go to the band, you say, look, you played too loud. You shut the power off. If you do it again, we're, you know, you're not going to come back to this venue again. Um, you get strict with these bands. You keep them in place. You get the decibels to where people can enjoy it, and it's not hurting people's ears. This whole problem really goes away. So that's my two cents.
Well, thank you for those two cents. Thank you very much. All right. Good afternoon and welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, hello, everybody. My name is Aster Ping. I've been living in Santa Cruz for four years. I'm a tech worker by day and a musician by night. Uh, public speaking is not my forte. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I feel very moved to support Woodhouse. So I'm going to read my email. I actually wrote to City Plan over the weekend, but I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to read it. Um, so I'm going to read it here. I am writing to express my full support for Woodhouse Brewery and the vital role it plays in the Santa Cruz community. As a local musician, I have had the privilege of performing at Woodhouse since May and bring my music to a venue that is not only incredibly supportive of local artists, but also fosters a welcoming and vibrant atmosphere for the community as a whole. Uh, I understand that a noise complaint has been raised by a nearby resident, and I would like to emphasize that Woodhouse's live music and community-driven atmosphere are integral to what makes this business such a cherished part of Santa Cruz. Many of my friends, because I'm originally from the Bay Area, who traveled down from cities like San Francisco and Oakland, have commented on the warm and inviting community they encounter at Woodhouse. And it's clear that the business contributes not only to the local cultural fabric, but also to the economy by attracting visitors from out of town and generating revenue for the area. I'd also like to highlight, um, some important distinctions between Woodhouse and other venues in Santa Cruz, such as Mo's Alley, The Catalyst, Kumbhara Jazz Center, and Rio Theater. Unlike these commercial venues, which charge for tickets to live performances, almost all of Woodhouse's music events are free to the public. And this accessibility makes Woodhouse an invaluable resource for our community, offering cultural experiences to all residents regardless of their socioeconomic status. Um, I believe both the brewery and its neighbors can coexist peacefully in this space. As Woodhouse's activities, I feel like enhance the desirability and livability of the neighborhood. For example, I live next to Chamanad Resort, where live music is played outdoors until 10:00 PM. And I find the presence of music and community gatherings to be a positive and enriching aspect of my neighborhood. Woodhouse's owners and staff are respectful, caring, and considerate, and their vision for a positive, community-oriented gathering space has been so special to local artists and the wider Santa Cruz public. I urge you to consider the many benefits that Woodhouse brings to the Santa Cruz community and to support their continued operation as a cultural and economic asset. Many of us in Santa Cruz, myself included, rely on Woodhouse for the joy, connection, and creative, creativity it provides. And I hope that you will take these factors into account as you review this matter. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else online? Good afternoon and welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Good afternoon, Mayor Keely and council members. My name is Ilana, and I work locally in the nonprofit and philanthropy space. I'm born and raised in Santa Cruz County, and my husband and his family have been business owners in Old Sash Mill for more than three decades. I want to call into question the entire premise of the argument presented by the owners of Santa Cruz Core Fitness, as to me, it feels like a huge elephant in the room. They claim to serve the mission of health and wellness for their clients. However, these are the same folks who pled guilty just two years ago to federal fraud charges for distributing fake COVID immunization pills and vaccination cards. As a resident and neighboring business owner, this calls into question the sincerity of their entire statement and its smacks of entitlement, further intentions to shirk rules, standards of care, and established hours of business operations, and so on. I ask you to seriously consider the veracity of the statement they presented today and the appeal in its entirety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Thank you. This thing turned on. Okay. Hey, thanks, guys. Uh, my name's Reggie. I've been a Santa Cruz resident for about 13 years, uh, downtown resident for about four. Used to work with the downtown, uh, can't remember what it's called, but I recognize Sonia. And so, yeah, I've been downtown, uh, and I moved to, to the Sash Mill about 2021. Anyway, uh, yeah, there's about 14, 15 of us who live on the back wall there. It's the live-work units. So I realize we're kind of outnumbered, but I am here to just say we're there. Um, so. But I also, I'm friends with Jace. I go to Afro Beats. Uh, I love, like, 13 years ago, we didn't have Afro Beats. We didn't have Woodhouse. And it was really dead. I mean, I don't know if you guys have been to the Blue Lagoon, but that place is kind of creepy. So what, so the vibe of Woodhouse is really great, and, and I, and I really do enjoy it sometimes. Sometimes on the dance floor, sometimes I'm in bed enjoying it involuntarily as the decibels pulse through my ears. So I, I think, I, I resonated with the audio engineer who kind of brought the, the argument that, you know, this doesn't need to be a big issue as long as everyone's kind of playing within the rules. But I, I just wanted to make the statement that we are here, like the neighbors, and Petro, it goes back a little bit, and there's definitely other residences that are within earshot. You know, it's not just Core. You know, it's not just Core and that business, but I know when you're there and you look around, you're like, it's just the train tracks. And over there is like PetSmart, and it looks really bare, but we are there, a couple of us. So, yeah, like 85 decibels and the power switch trips, like, that would be awesome, I think. Anyway, hopefully, yeah, hopefully this was helpful input. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, sir. Good afternoon, both of you.
Hey, guys. I'm Justin Wattstein and I own Sladehand Pizza, which is a mobile wood-fired pizza company. And I just wanted to say that places like this are huge for mobile businesses, any mobile business, not just food. But when you're mobile, you're kind of at the whim of where people can go and hang out and any kind of show, doubles if not triples sales. Mobile business can be very tough through the winter. So big pop-ups that we do help to get us through the winters. I can say recently, we did a KRS-One show and there was us and two other foods. Great event. There was, you know, all kinds of people from the community. And it's so vital for companies that are mobile to be able to go to places like this because a lot of, you know, we could pop up several places, but a lot of times you're breaking even, you're taking losses. So to have things that are guaranteed to be busy, that'll get you through, like, to the next step. Mobile can be a bit of a humble beginning situation. And so for those of us in the mobile community, I feel like it's just pivotal to have these types of places to go to where there's a lot of outdoor space. I heard COVID, you know, referenced several times and there's a lot of music venues, but there's not a lot of outdoor music venues like Woodhouse. It's different in that way. And as a small business owner, you know, I'm sure, just like Woodhouse, they hear the other businesses that are close fighting for their case, which is also equally important. But I agree that there's got to be a better agreement than just your music has to be inside. Their outdoor space is amazing and I'm right there with seeing the families and the, you know, it's not just people going to a bar, it's like families dancing, like Afro Beats. You'll see, you know, kids dancing and they do like all kinds of Brazilian music where, you know, it's just, it's just a really cool thing for families. Personally, I don't drink, so it's more than just, you know, people going to get drunk and dance. It's families and it's a really cool space that should be treated as such. So thank you.
Don't go away. My wife will not let me go home and into the house if you don't show that baby on TV. Hi, sweetie.
This is Ben. He's a-
Good afternoon, sweetheart. Thank you.
Just not from his nap. He just barely made it. He was starting to talk, so he did.
Thank you both very much for being here. Good afternoon. Follow that.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon to property owners, business owners, everybody. My name is Lyndon Kimball-Grace and I've had, I want to take a bigger view if possible. I worked and got a master's in city and regional planning and economic development from Berkeley and worked for the city of San Jose. I've done pro bono work for Santa Cruz. And I also operated for 10 years a nonprofit music venue called Cayuga Vault. And we had music from all over the world and we had music locally and it was a very empowering venue. And one of the coolest things about it that everybody loved is that it was a space where people were safe bringing their babies as well as their elders. And when we closed, there really was no place like that. And I have noticed with the closing of Woodhouse and having to move their music indoors, it feels completely different than when they're doing the outdoor music. So that, I think, it's kind of been touched on here, but I want to emphasize that, that that has much more of a community impact and opening and inclusiveness. And I want to just acknowledge everybody's beautiful comments about Woodhouse because it's a great venue. The other thing is that I have worked for 25 years as a massage therapist and I know Jamie from way back when. And I want to support you, Jamie, because I know, on one hand, this has been traumatizing for you to have to deal with this. But at the same time, I can say that the business, which I've also been in, which is a Core Fitness business, is completely compatible with Woodhouse and the activities and the activities in the area. It's a light industrial area. To put massage and the clients, massage clients, in that same business and expect for all the industrial area around it to abide by those clients is probably a stretch. And that's what nobody's even brought up. It's a big stretch. Massage can be done at other locations, and I don't mean to say that you should, how you should do your business, but the truth of the matter is, I mean, we've just had another massage venue open up on Mission Street. So there are spaces for massage and one doesn't have to have massage with the core business of Core Fitness. I know that for a fact. So I just wonder if this wouldn't be an easier issue if we looked at the use of massage in an industrial site and what impact that's having on the city. Okay?
Thank you for being here. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Jacob Alexander-Siedman. I'm a local business owner. I have several businesses here. I've been in Santa Cruz for about 15 years and I'm also a peacemaker and I have a clothing company called Shalom. And I've been able to vend my product at Woodhouse several times. And I've created a really good relationship with Will and Tug. And I ended up doing an event called Santa Cruz Mini Festival. And I had about 10 events over the course of six months. And every single time, Will and Tug and I talked about the sound, the levels of how high, and we would go back and forth all day. I have a decibel reader on my phone and we'd be, we would stick under 85 decibels. We would watch and monitor. So they are very conscious and well aware of the sound. And, you know, as a community member, I've had to stop my event because this permit being held from them. And I'd really love to see this happen for them again because it's holding me back. I've been able to bring artists and be able to pay people and host tons of vendors that were able to make money and generate revenue. So not only are they losing revenue, but a lot of people in town are losing revenue because they can't vend and they can't show up. So I'd really love to see this get passed for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Keely and council members for the opportunity. My name is Tom Kerr. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz. I'm here today to speak in support of Woodhouse. First, I'll just briefly reiterate what so many here have said today. Woodhouse is an amazing place. I love going there with my wife and my six-year-old daughter. It's a safe place, a friendly place. We've made friends there and I hope it's here to stay. More specifically today, I wanted to speak to the appellant's suggestion that this process should be further delayed and continued while we talk about more sound issues. I would urge the council to end this process today and deny the appeal. Obviously, this process has gone on far too long already. The appellant waited until the last possible day to file the appeal. I would suggest that their efforts to say this is about compromise aren't really in good faith and that they're really seeking further and further delay. And I would urge the council to deny the appeal today. And on a similar vein, I think ongoing sound studies and monitoring only serves to incur further expense for the business. And obviously, once a permit is issued, the city will have jurisdiction over the permit. There are ways to enforce when it's too loud, but we don't need the business incurring $30, $40,000 a year for ongoing sound studies. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome, sir.
Hello, my name's Jeff Davidson. I've had an office at the Sashmell for 22 years. My second-story office looks over the tracks at Woodhouse and down Madrone. You can probably imagine all the different things that I've seen in the course of having my office there, including a full SWAT-style raid, drug raid at the corner house. And I think since Woodhouse has been there, it's the longest period of relative con that I've seen in that area. And I just, I think, you know, what everybody else has said here, it's created this fabulous venue, you know, as Sladehand just said, the night at KRS-One, I went there with my wife, I went there with my son, several of his friends, and it just creates a venue that does feel very special for Santa Cruz. And so, just to keep it short, 100% support this and I think it should go on now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to provide initial testimony on this? This would be your opportunity to do so.
Is this on the distribution of funds for the-
No. No. Anyone else on, excuse me, anyone else on this issue? Seeing, hearing, none? The appellant's have five minutes.
Mayor, really quick, sorry, someone did just raise their hand.
Oh, somebody did. Excuse me for just a moment, we're going to take the last person online here. Person online, good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Vicky Sanchez and I just wanted to say that Woodhouse has been such a fabulous addition to our community, to the music scene here in Santa Cruz. And it was really such an important part of helping so many people get through the pandemic, knowing that you could go there and listen to music safely in such a beautiful community spirit. And I just wanted to reiterate the support for them. I really hope that this can be worked out among the people that, you know, are looking for some clarification with noise and with Woodhouse so that their music can go on. It would be wonderful if it could be outside again. I do feel like this has gone on too long and it's causing undue hardship for them. Adding $40,000 worth of sound testing a year is, it just seems like undue hardship that is punitive for some small business that, you know, hasn't been around that long and that we would like to keep around. It's, as we've heard, it's created safety in the neighborhood where there used to be more delinquency. It's created community for a lot of people. I mean, I go there very often. It's a place where a lot of our favorite bands go and it's a place where a lot of the Brazilian community goes, which I don't belong to, but I'm very welcome in and love the music. And it would be great to have it go on. We often eat there, there's different pop-ups, you can try different kinds of food that you may not find elsewhere in Santa Cruz. And everyone has their own community, you know, favorite places and music venues that are their favorites. And this just happens to be one for a lot of people. And I think a lot of people would be really sad if it went away. And I also think that it's been a place where you hear a lot of music that you may not hear elsewhere. So it's really a pillar of what Santa Cruz stands for, the openness and being very open to different lifestyles and diversity. And in these times, we really need a place like that for the community. So I don't think you can just say, well, you can go hear music somewhere else, you know. This is one of the favorite places for many people. And so I really hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online? Okay. This, let me make sure we're real clear on your five-minute period of time at this point. So this is the opportunity for the appellant to provide five minutes of rebuttal. Two rules on this. No new information provided at this point. The appellant may only rebut information already provided, just so we're clear on what the rules are here.
I'll deliver under five. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What I hear in the room is an enormous amount of consensus. There's still some remaining difference. You all are faced with a binary choice that was put to you today, and that is whether or not to adopt a resolution denying the appeal that would thus uphold the Planning Commission's recommendations. But what you've heard today are a lot of thoughtful comments of people of goodwill on both sides of an issue who've exposed some differences and concerns that can be worked out. But I'm concerned, and my clients, Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell, are concerned that a vote of yes to the staff's recommendation to you all is going to shut down that conversation. It's going to create uncertainty, it's going to make it difficult to enforce a standard which has still not been reached by the consensus of the room. And so what the Mitchells are asking today, and most immediately, is that this body vote no on the resolution maintain the status quo for a very short period of time so that all the folks of goodwill in this room can get together with the city staff and bring the issue to finality in a way that's going to reduce complaints in the future, that's going to reduce the excess use of city resources to respond to those complaints, and that's going to make all the businesses successful. I appreciate procedurally, as the mayor pointed out in the beginning, we're in a difficult spot. We're here at the 11th hour on an appeal and an up or down vote. But I don't think you all are hamstrung by the procedural posture. You have a lot more discretion than that. And with respect to the good folks at the city who have made your recommendation, I think you can vote no and still keep alive the issues. The bar's not going away, the live music's not going away. It's going to happen and ideally under circumstances where everybody can agree. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's acknowledgement of the environmental determination. Approval of the master use permit and special use permit based on the findings listed in the draft resolution and conditions of approval.
There is a motion, a second by Councilmember Watkins. Councilmember Brown, you may open on your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I, first of all, want to appreciate everybody who came out and appreciate the concerns of those who have experienced the effects of the noise, the impacts of the noise for your business. And I do, I do not want to discount that. However, given the materials before us and as the mayor stated at the beginning of this meeting, the, or this agenda item, excuse me, we are acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. And what I see in the documents before us is, you know, assures me that this is an operation, this is a business that is operating within the city code and that they have made all efforts to address noise issues. I don't anticipate that they're going to just drop that neighborly approach with the ability to operate as they're requesting. And I want to say, I agree, I am a neighbor as well. And those of us who live in that neighborhood, in this neighborhood, I'm a little ways away across the river, but Woodhouse has been a very positive presence in our neighborhood. And I could say all kinds of wonderful things, the only negative one being, I can't believe I missed KRS-One, it was like across the street from me. But, you know, but that's not what we are here to decide whether or not Woodhouse is a business that we like or don't like, or how generous and, you know, the safe space they create. I agree, that all is true. But the bottom line is, for our purposes today, they are following the rules set forth by the city and the conditions of approval demonstrate that there will be accountability if that were to not be the case. So I think that item 27 in the conditions of approval provides that opportunity to continue to work with the neighbors around acceptable levels of noise and how that will be addressed. And I feel that is sufficient for us to move forward today, denying the appeal.
Through the debate or discussion, Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
Thank you. I also just wanted to briefly call that point out. We heard some great testimony about the space that Woodhouse is in our community and the amazing impact- amazing impact it has in terms of economic and cultural impact in our community. I know that the impact to Woodhouse is not just to Woodhouse the business, but to the hundreds of artists and people and vendors that are also supported by Woodhouse and supported by the community there. It's a ripple effect. And I think it's important to call out our 2023 Economic and Arts and Cultural Impact Report of the city. I think the county also has that. And, you know, there's over 900 something jobs generated from that, you know, area of impact and revenue generated, and it's just so much of an amazing impact in our community. Given all that, you know, the pop-ups, the vendors, the musicians, the artists, I discovered cracked cookies at Woodhouse during one of the pop-ups. That's not why we are here. We are here to determine this appeal, and that's before us. And I absolutely agree that after hearing all the testimony, that this project as condition meets all the findings and requirements of approval for the master special permit that they have applied for and that the Planning Commission has approved, and therefore, I also will be supporting the denial of the appeal. Thank you.
Through the debate or discussion, seeing, hearing, none, the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passed, is in still order. We are on item 29. This is a, an amendment to Chapter 18.15 of the municipal code and various other actions. On item 29, we will receive a staff report from Dr. Tiffany Wise-West, as well as various members of the, our planning staff. Dr. Wise-West, good afternoon and welcome to the council meeting, and thank you for your good work.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I am here today to share with you the Energy Efficient Renovations Ordinance, the first reading. This is a collaboration between the Planning Department and the City Manager's Office. And as you know, this has come before you in a study session, and we have conducted additional engagement that has helped to shape what this ordinance looks like. So, just, I'll give you briefly background, what the proposed policy requirements are, the accompanying exemptions, and the resources that are available, as well as the recommendation that we do have. I won't read all of this, but suffice it to say that the council has been proactive in adopting decarbonization policy dating back to the prohibition of gas in new construction, followed by our New Construction Energy Reach Code. We began work on this existing buildings' energy-efficient renovations policy over two years ago, engaging with the public on a variety of options that were available to address energy usage and emissions in existing buildings, and has then brought us to this point to where, through spring and fall, we've been conducting community engagement, including the study session, meeting with the Santa Cruz County Realtors Association, developers, designers, contractors, a virtual meeting with the public, some really good feedback from Planning Commission, as we always get for these types of ordinances, and then a survey that we've had available, which I will kind of pepper in where those comments come in throughout this presentation. So, why are we bringing this forward? So, we are focusing on single-family homes because they are 87% of buildings in Santa Cruz. And to note, 84% of those homes were built before 1991, so they have very dated systems. They are not efficient. And then, of course, 26% of our greenhouse gas emissions are attributable to building energy usage. So, this is a prime area for us to focus on. The council has also adopted the Climate Action Plan 2030, which contains two specific measures, as you can see here, that pertain to energy efficiency, renewable energy, and electrification. But I do want to emphasize that this policy is not an electrification policy. It provides choice on energy efficiency, in which case, some electrified components are the most efficient. Also, why we are pursuing this policy is that the California Air Resources Board is phasing in zero-emission appliance standards beginning in 2027. These standards, in addition to improving air quality, which of course, this ordinance would do as well, and reducing emissions, it's targeting residential and commercial water heaters, space heaters, and by 2030, all new space and water heaters sold here in California are expected to meet these zero-emission standards. So, this is also helping our community to get prepared for these new forthcoming standards. I also want to emphasize, beyond the emissions piece, that there are a number of non-energy benefits to this REACH Code. As kind of summarized here, everything from increased comfort and control to reducing exterior noise and providing more, a better indoor air quality. So, I think the really important point to remember here is that residents in Santa Cruz are already voluntarily doing major alterations and additions here in Santa Cruz. That includes assembling the financing, the project team, taking the mental and physical energy to develop these projects out. This is an investment that only happens once every 20 to 30 years for these homes, which again, makes it a really prime opportunity to get these decarbonization and indoor air quality improvements into these homes now. The decarbonization measures, as you will see later on, they are a small addition to the overall cost of a renovation to an addition or an alteration. And I'll show you some numbers that demonstrate that in a way we haven't talked about before. So, in addition to that, let me just talk about what the policy at a glance looks like. So, the policy would pertain to major additions or alterations of 350 square feet or more. And the applicant would need to pick from a menu of energy-efficient measures, and in some cases, provide outlets for future zero-emission appliances. What this ordinance does not do is regulate the use of gas cooking equipment or other equipment, kitchen equipment or appliances. It does not require electrification. There's a number of choices, as you'll see. It is not triggered by small projects, like flooring projects, window replacements, kitchen upgrades, and et cetera. It is not triggered by work that does not require permit, and is not triggered by single appliance swap-outs. We've determined that this proposed ordinance will impact 110 permits a year. 850 metric tons of carbon dioxide is anticipated to be avoided for each one of those homes, making it a substantial way that we can reduce emissions. Also, the median project valuation is 130,000, and a median project construction cost, which has been a point that's been conflated, is around 230,000. So, the cost to build it is different than project valuation, and I will come back to that in just a moment. So, here's what those measures look like, and there have been a few changes based on some additional analysis in the Planning Commission. But as you can see, there are a number of different measures that can be selected to add up to a total score of nine. There are at least five cost-effective combinations, where cost-effective accounts for both the initial costs, capital costs, and the cost to operate over time. And there are dozens of combinations that are possible to meet that score of nine. This is all backed up by our cost-effectiveness studies that are being used throughout the state. So, there, you know, this is something that's being used consistently, the analytics on how we determine the point values for each measure. So, how would a project comply? Many ways. They can install a heat pump water heater, they can install a heat pump space heater, they can install solar PV and electric-ready pre-wiring, they can install floor insulation, either R19 or R30, they both have different insulation values, or install a combination of efficiency measures. So, here you see insulation with a water heating, or, I'm sorry, insulation both in the attic and the wall, combining water heating with duct sealing and so forth. So, again, this is meant to demonstrate that there are choices available here for residents who choose to go forward with these alterations should this be adopted. So, there are proposed exemptions. Repairs are not part of this ordinance. There is a carve-out for pre-compliance. If you've already put solar on your home, if you've already done any one of those measures, you get credit for that. Historic buildings, historic buildings would be exempt to any of the requirements that would impair the historic integrity of the building. Things like seismic retrofit, temporary structures or mobile homes, cost burden. We do have a threshold that costs associated with the ordinance compliance, if it exceeds 20%, the chief building official can bring that threshold down so that it is not a huge burden of cost on the residents. I've already mentioned not touching the windows or homes. And ADUs, something that's different from what we presented to you at the study session, is that due to the statewide exemptions, about 99% of ADUs are exempt from this, would be exempt from this ordinance. That's something that did not come to light for us until after the study session, so I just want to make that clear. So, now on to the costs. So, again, it's important to remember here that project valuation is simply a formulaic metric that's used to determine the building permit cost. It is not based on the cost of construction. So, right now, the median project valuation for the five years of data that we evaluated was about 130,000. The estimated typical cost of compliance, which excludes rebates and incentives, is about $6,600. That's a 5% increase in the project valuation, or the 5% increase over the project valuation to comply with the ordinance. However, if you look at that a different way, if you look at the construction cost, and this is a very conservative construction cost at about $600 per square foot, we know here in Santa Cruz, we're seeing up to $1,000 per square foot. So, at 600 per square foot, we have about a median project cost, so this is the actual construction cost, of 230,000. So, again, looking at the 6,600 as the typical cost of compliance, that's just about 3% added to the construction cost to comply. If you look at the maximum cost of compliance, which is 26,000, that's about an 11.5% increase. I want to shed a little bit more light on this, though, because if you look at, let's say, $1,000 per square foot, that takes your median project construction cost to 350,000. And so, you have, again, the bigger denominator, right? So, that means for the typical cost of compliance, that goes down to about 2%. For the maximum cost of compliance, it goes down to about 7.4% over the construction cost. And if you think about it with rebates, which is not being included, that takes that 6,600 down, or I should just say, the maximum cost, down to about 5.6% additional cost on top of the construction cost. So, we thought it would be helpful to break this down in a little different of a way because the cost piece has been the biggest piece of feedback that we've heard, the affordability. And on that point, while we've heard that folks are concerned about this increasing affordability, the fact is, is that these alterations and additions, they are happening anyway. And the cost of those, as compared to the cost of the decarbonization piece, is the major cost that is in the improvement, right? So, there are a lot of studies out there, and I know sometimes you guys don't want to hear about the studies, but that state that, you know, affordability is influenced by a variety of factors. And this decarbonization piece is not found to have actually increased the cost of housing in these studies. It is but one of a variety of factors. So, we really wanted to set the cost piece into a better context for you all versus the project valuation, which is a little bit misleading, considering that is not the cost of construction. So, with that, there are resources available, and I would say this is another piece that we've received feedback on, is that how are people going to know about these incentives? How are they going to navigate these incentives? Our green building program does already put out a fact sheet on the incentives that are available during consultations. We are intending to revise that. These things change often. And do additional promotion regardless of what happens with the ordinance. We want people to know about those rebates and incentives. In addition to those that exist now, both from the utility, from Central Coast Community Energy, from the Inflation Reduction Act, we have a new regional energy network that's coming online in 2025 that's going to help with this. It's also going to help contractors and homeowners to navigate these processes, so there's a lot of supportive structures that are coming online to help with these types of ordinances. And lastly, you know, on the point of low-income folks and decarbonization and affordability, in addition to the grant that we received a couple of years ago to decarbonize low-income households, we just submitted the HUD Pro Housing Grant, which would stand up a fund to help with these kinds of things, should we receive that. So, lots in the pipeline, as well as that already exists in terms of resources to help. With that, you have the recommendation. I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, questions? Vice Mayor is recognized.
Do you really want me to go first?
Yes.
You know I'm going to have the most. You know what, Dr. Wise-West, you know I'm usually always here to kind of push back. I have to say, I do think this is a nice compromise to achieving our goals and keeping things moving forward in terms of construction and the cost to build. I did have a couple of questions. I was wondering, in terms of cost, what would it cost at the city level, and maybe Director Butler can answer this, in terms of staff time? Are we going to need to hire additional staffers? Is this something that's already going to be taken care of in-house with our regular procedures of plan check and all that?
Yes, thank you for that question. That came up at Planning Commission as well, and the chief building official stated that this would be something that they are not anticipating a huge new workload. It is going to require some training for both our consultants that we have that work on plan review and internally, but we are not planning on hiring any staff. There isn't a need for it, according to the chief building official.
Thank you. And then, my other question is in regards to our current green building code and Title 24. How is this vastly different than what's already before us?
Yes, thank you for that question. So, just want to make a distinction. I think you mean the green building program versus the green building code?
Yeah.
So, the green building program addresses water conservation, material choices, site design, and so forth, that don't necessarily get at greenhouse gas emissions. Energy is one small part of it. This REACH Code is purely on energy. It's about energy efficiency and reducing the amount of electricity that's being used. So, while the green building program touches on that, it's more holistic, and points can be gained by not even doing energy-related work through other types of choices that might be made, whether it's the types of materials that's being used or how the site is being designed. So, that's the primary difference between the two. They're very complementary, but the green building program does not get us what we need on the energy side to reduce emissions.
And then, my final question, if you can believe it, this is the final question, is looking at this, it looks like it makes sense to me. I've looked at it, you know, upside and down, whatever, every which way. However, I have a concern that if you were to raise that number or change things, it might make things not work out, not pencil out, as we say. And I'm wondering, is there any plan, like in three years, one year, five years, to like make those adjustments? Honestly.
So, your question is increasing the points from nine? We have not even discussed that.
Okay.
Now, with that said, I will say that, you know, as I led in the study... Now with that said, I will say that, you know, as I led in the study session, is that this is one of what could be many things that come forward with respect to existing buildings, because this only captures alterations and additions. So I don't want to say no, never, but we haven't even contemplated anything like that. It's not been discussed.
Thank you. I do intend to support it, although I have reservations. I know, I appreciate the compromise, and I just, I just want, the only, like, I'll save my final thoughts for later.
Further questions, comments by board members? Excuse me, by council members? Do you wish to make some concluding remarks?
I guess I'll make my.
Certainly.
I think this is a good, a good compromise. I am concerned about any increase in the cost of affordability in terms of redevelopment and building for folks. I just want to also be realistic, that if you're paying 500 or $1,000 a square foot to remodel your house, you are not eligible for any of those rebates. It just isn't true. And so, it is what it is, but I do think as things change over time and as people have replaced appliances, I think some of this stuff has already happened at homes, and we just aren't capturing it. We just might not know when they go out and buy a new refrigerator, or freezer, or toilet, or whatever it is, where they might not get a permit. And so I think that we're further along in accomplishing our goals than I think we think we are, but I do appreciate your work in this, in this, and I will support it.
This is the opportunity for anyone who's with us, who wishes to make comment on this item, to do so. Ms. Bush, while Mr. Ewing is approaching, do we have anyone online? Do Mr. Ewing, good afternoon and welcome, sir.
Yeah, it's nice to be here. My name is James Ewing. We have three minutes. Yes?
Please.
How nice. You know, I started working in the constructions industry full-time in 1988. At that time, R13 for the walls, R19 for the floor, R30 for the ceiling. That's the similar stuff. You know, if this city needed another reason to have lawsuits, this isn't high on my list, but it certainly is one of them. You know, what's going on in the UK is in, they're trying to implement legislation for you to rent out your house. You have to bring it up to all these crazy codes. That's where this is, that's where this is going. The electric, the electric, electric, geez, I can't pronounce that today. I'm not even going to try. Sometimes days are funnier than others. It's really a problem. What happens when the power goes out? You don't have gas heat, or water, or, for any number of things, for forced air heating. I brought in a book here about a year ago that came out in about 2011, and there were dozens of lawsuits about the smart heaters. You know, at that time, the city of Watsonville put a one-year moratorium on there. So there's a lot of issues with these weapons. You know, I would never own an electric car, an AC electric car. Anybody can do their own research. It's very toxic to humans. We are DC electrical beings. So as far as, you know, the zero carbon emissions, it really hasn't changed much. What is it, 417 parts per million? That's one particle CO2 to, to over 2,200 particles of other things in our atmosphere. Why do people who want to make bigger vegetables and more healthy fruits and trees add extra CO2 to their greenhouses? Because the plants love it. We are at almost extinction level. And so, I mean, I don't really want to be rude, but I had the opportunity to talk to a bunch of older people who lived in Santa Cruz before UCSC came in. And I could be more particular about who donated that land, and that's the Castro family in the 1840s, millions of acres in California. So I'm, I think that this is really a catch-22 for the people, and although it's only going to really affect maybe 110 permits, there's a lot of reasons why people should be questioning all these extra standards. Thirty seconds. I don't need 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Anyone online? We'll take the person online. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I think she got disconnected. I'm going to the next person.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to testify on this item? I'm going to take a moment and let this person call back in. So if you just bear with me for a second, we don't want to cut this person off. Give us a moment here. Thank you. No? Okay. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body.
I move the recommendation.
Motion, second by Councilmember Colentari Johnson. You may open on your motion. Councilmember Watkins.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate the work that went into bringing us to this place. And I think for all of the reasons that were mentioned, it's a really good direction to go in. I agree with, with Vice Mayor Golda. I think some of these things are naturally happening, and to make it so that we're meeting those standards in a way that works for individuals who are in the process of these types of, of projects, I think makes a lot of sense. So I appreciate the work. I am supportive of the proposal and happy to move the recommendation.
Further debate or discussion, council member?
I'll just briefly comment. I appreciate the work in, in making this both bold and pragmatic and doable. So, thank you.
Councilmember?
I just, I'll echo that, and summarize what I wanted to say. And thank you for the energy efficiency options and all the components that went into this. Thank you.
All debate having ceased. The clerk will call the law.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Colentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. Let me let you know where we're at in the scheme of things here today. We've been sitting here since noon, and so we are going to take a 10-minute break, 12-minute break. We're going to come back here at 3:25. Let me tell you what we're doing at, at 3:30. We have some scheduled presentations, and we are going to go through those. Then we will get back on track and here at, you just give me a second. We'll hear item 30 and 31 after those presentations we're making. So again, we're going to take a break until 3:25, 3:30. We're going to make four quick presentations. Then we will commence with the balance of our agenda. We stand in recess until 3:25. Santa Cruz City Council is back in session following a brief afternoon recess. We are, at this point, going to be thanking and honoring a number of public servants who are wrapping up their public service careers. And we are going to start with a person who has dedicated her adult life to public service. As a San Mateo County Supervisor, as a member of Congress for the better part of three decades, and in several of the forms of her district over the years, she has represented portions of Santa Cruz County. And whether she represented Santa Cruz County or not, she always had us in her heart. And when we had disasters, it didn't matter if it was technically inside her district or not, she was there to help us. When we needed assistance from the federal government on transportation or environmental protection, social services or other issues, Anna Eschew was there every single time. She made it a point to come to Santa Cruz County to spend time when her district included the San Lorenzo Valley and other portions of our community, and was there unhesitatingly for our community. She served in the House of Representatives with great distinction on committees, on subcommittees, doing great work for the state of California. And so, Anna Eschew, I want to thank you. And we have a couple of gifts that will make their way to you. Excuse me. And you get proclamations from time to time, and you give them out. We appreciate that. Excuse me. And we have one of those for you, of course. We also have a plaque that we are going to give you. But we're going to do something a little different this time, Anna, and that is this. You, over the years, from time to time, you'll come back from Washington DC and you'll bring a flag for someone that's flown over the nation's capital. And when you do that, that is always a very, very special moment for the recipient of that. So we're going to turn tables on you, and what you are also going to get from us is a Santa Cruz city flag, which is flown over City Hall. And we are going to give this to you, together with the proclamation and, and your, your other, the other notes of appreciation we want to send you. But Anna Eschew, thank you so much for your years of public service, and God love you every day, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, my dear friend of decades, Fred Keeley, to the Vice Mayor, Renee Golda, to the councilwomen, Sandy Brown, Sonia Brunner, Shabra Colentari-Johnson, Martine Watkins, and Councilman Scott Newsom, and to all the staff that is there as well. They're all part of the family. You've made this a very beautiful day for me. And it's been, it's been a really rather bittersweet day, because the House of, the new members are coming in to receive their orientation, but at the same time, the House of Representatives and all of the offices are being emptied so that new members can take their place. So it's really cold-blooded. They just stripped down my office today. And it's, it's a very special joy to be with you. Fred and, and members of the council, I think you know that I served in, in local government for a decade. The mayor highlighted that. I have a very deep, deep appreciation and respect for local government. It really shaped me legislatively. So when I say thank you for your service to the community, it's a very deep and broad thanks, understanding all that comes with it. I wish I could be there in the chamber with you, but I still have a desk that I'm speaking from. Let me say how important Santa Cruz County and my beautiful constituents that reside there. First of all, it's been the honor, the honor of my life, really the highest privilege to represent Santa Cruz County over the years. I don't think there's a community in my congressional district that has welcomed me with such open arms, with a great embrace, being invited to people's homes, to their backyards, to the community centers, and how the community came together when disasters struck, the horrendous CC fires, floods, you know, the challenges that the people in the community have faced. And I, I will never forget how people not only welcomed me to their homes and into the community, but took me into their hearts. And that sets Santa Cruz County and, and that can, my constituency really apart, because it's been extra special. Thank you for the city flag. That means a great deal to me. I've never had a city flag in my life, and now I do. You are the first and the only. And I'll have to get a flagpole to put out in front of my house. I'll raise that flag with the American flag. So now it's 32 years later, and what I would like to say to you is, we're just in the aftermath of a national election. Some people are very happy, and, and many of us are actually grieving. Where you are in the City Hall Chamber, that is ground zero for democracy, what you are doing. It's ground zero. You are the ones that are planting the seeds for our democracy. And I think as you work, do your work, that we'll have stronger communities, and when we have stronger communities, we're going to have a stronger country. No, let me put it this way. From the very beginnings of our country, every generation has had challenges. And no generation following the earliest ones, their challenge, they had challenges, no generation of Americans ever said, you know what, we're throwing the towel in on this magnificent experiment. So yes, we're being tested, but we are a resilient, decent, and good people. And I know, I know your hearts. I know the quality of your work. I know the commitment that you have to our mutual constituents. We're going to come through this. We're going to come through this. And I, I, that's not only my hope and my prayer, that is, it comes from very deep inside of me. So you will always have me as a partner in some way, shape, or form. You're not getting rid of me as I, as I depart from the Congress. Thank you for the support that you have given to me. Thank you for your friendships. Thank you for, thank you for everything. I, I couldn't mean it more. So bravo to each one of you. Thank you for Anna Eschew Day. I'm going to let my children know, this is going to mean a great deal to them. Wow, mom, really? They chose you? So, yeah. This would have otherwise been not such a, not such a terrific day, but you made it so. So bless each one of you, and may God protect our troops, and God bless Santa Cruz County. Bless our magnificent state of California, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I, I just couldn't mean it more.
God bless you, Anna Eschew. Thank you, my friend. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me see. Do we have as yet, we are looking for Supervisor McPherson. I don't see him yet. He will be here around 4:00, I believe. We can take those. Those will go over to Anna Eschew. And what we will do now is, we're going to wait for, we'll proceed with other business, and when our other folks show up, we will, we'll proceed to that. At this point, we are on item number 30. This is collective of results and evidence-based recommend awards. We have Mr. M. Wally with us. We have material in our packet. Mr. M. Wally, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. Larry Wally, Homelessness Response Manager. Here this afternoon to present on the core funding recommendations, I'm joined with my colleague on the city staff, Emeline Nguyen, and our county colleagues at Human Services Department, Director Randy Morris, and Deputy Director Kimberly Peterson. We have a short PowerPoint for you, and to start off the presentation, I will turn it over to Director Morris.
Thank you. Mr. Morris, as you're approaching, let me thank you and the county for all the fine work you do. Our partnership with you is one that we value, whether it's in the homeless space or other space. Thank you very, very much for your fine work. And please pass that on to the members of the Board of Supervisors.
I, I will. And I just want to take a moment to appreciate your appreciation of a congressman and her words. It's not a time a lot of hope, and I will tell you, as a human service director who got in this line of work for probably reasons that overlap with you, it's very difficult to be in complicated spaces like limited money for CBOs and homeless policy, when tends to bring the worst out of us and not the best. I appreciate those comments. We endeavor to be partners, but boy, is it challenging. So to today, Kimberly and I will co-present Deputy and Director of Human Services. As you well know, as a former board member, the board for, I think, 40 years has asked the Human Services Department to hold contracts with community-based organizations. Used to be called a certain program. It shifted about eight, nine years ago, before I ever got here. And I do want to share, just if this is helpful, on that national perspective. And I do want to share, just if this is helpful, that national perspective from the Congresswoman, I came from a jurisdiction that had way more general fund than Santa Cruz County and Santa Cruz City. Santa Cruz County and City put a lot of general fund. It's a gift, and we have to figure out why it has turned into a curse, because it's actually from the gates, something a lot of jurisdictions don't do. So I'm invested, regardless of where we go today, I think in the future, we have to rethink something, because this is turning out to cause too much controversy. And I just want to start by recognizing that's not why I signed up for this work. So with that said, the PowerPoint is going to be a repeat with two changes. One is we inserted county board hearing update this morning. So we'll walk through what happened in the board this morning. And then rather than Kimberly, Kimberly and I presenting to the county board the recommended actions, we will turn it back to Larry, because these are recommended actions for you. So that's the only thing, otherwise just make sure you have the same presentation. So to the next slide, we felt it was important to walk through the timeline, because what we endeavored to do as staff, and I know this is our i-statement, and people are entitled to have a different opinion, we endeavored to bring forward, in the rearview mirror, a big body of lessons learned, interviews with elected officials, both city and county at the time, a number of community stakeholder meetings, and bring back adjustments and improvements to the past procurement, which, like today, landed with a set of recommended awards that many celebrated, but many disliked, and polarized the community. So we wanted to figure out, what can we do to get to a better place? Intent and impact. The intent was spot on, we followed a direction, and here we are again, landing a little different than intended. So wanted to share this with you for your consideration. Two big recommendations. One, narrow the focus. Number two, create more public hearings for elected officials, the city and the county, to give direction, so that we can apply said direction, so that the slate of recommended awards that come back represent your priorities. More public hearings, more opportunities for public feedback and direction. So that is what is in this slide. And one of the first hearings we had was a timeline that got approved by the board and then followed by the city. That timeline started in December 2023. We were brought to the board in the morning and the council in the afternoon. Of this framework, and it's probably not even worth calling the framework, because the name of the framework seems to cause controversy, it's really like focus areas. There was eight in this, in this framework, and we recommended a staff to focus on three. And the reason we did that was because we did an analysis of how much county general fund, it was a county-centric analysis, county general fund is applied to these eight focus areas, and there was three that stood out that we were under-invested. That was in the older adult and children and youth, healthy families category, lifelong learning category, and, to no one's surprise, affordable housing and shelter. We felt we need to focus here, because general fund is precious. We got additional direction from the board in the morning that you supported in the afternoon, to include healthy environments. So the end result was a focus narrowing from eight to four. And then the second action that occurred in December was, we will be back in front of the board and city council two times, because we want to create opportunities for the community-based organizations who were upset last time, to make advocacy efforts, write letters, make their case, before the recommended awards come back, and then elected officials can give us direction, how to make sure the recommended awards land. So we outlined that and summarized that in December. That led to April. In April, we came forward to the board in the morning and council in the afternoon, and this, through a whole series of staff recommendations and deliberations, led to separating the allocation, which remains the exact same, there's been no reduction, into three buckets. Bucket number one, heavily influenced, I will say, staff to staff, I hope that's okay to say that, city staff and us, to take 1.5 million to focus on the crisis of homelessness. And that was a whole set of actions that we agreed to set that off to the side, very specific ways, and that was approved. The second was to create a set-aside fund, which again, came from the lessons learned. Please give some options for the elected officials, if you're going to accept the slate of recommended awards, to have something to the side, to actually fill in the holes based on emerging things that happen, or if you're not sort of pleased with where it lands. The RFP that was presented to the board and the council had, and we just want to emphasize this because intent, there was 14 specific lessons learned, brought forward by community and elected officials in interviews, that we applied to adjust the RFP to reflect feedback. And we asked, option number one, please give us direction, if you want to see the slate of recommended awards focused on something, please carve out anything that is so important to you, you want to make sure it's funded, please tell us if you want a percentage of money to go here, to this region, or to this population, because we as staff don't know how to answer this question, this is your money. And to our surprise, there was not a single written correspondence from CBOs, not a single public comment, and we got no specific direction. And that's okay, but we lined that up because of the lessons learned in the ask of mostly electeds at both city and county. We did then articulate, we will be back in September with a summary of the slate of the applications, and we will ask again for direction. So we came back in September, we were, I think, on the 10th in the county, we had some logistics in, I think, the 24th here, and Kimberly was here with Larry. We summarized the apps, 100 applications. There is 4.5 times the amount of money asked for in the applications than money available. The time prior, it was three times, so the need has grown. Because we saw how big the need was, we asked the board and the council to consider a funding formula, to make sure, if you're not going to give us direction on specific programs, at least give us some sense of how you want the money to spread. And so a specific formula was approved. And then again, and I will admit to our surprise, there was no community-based organization written correspondence, no public comment, and we therefore got no direction. I'm lining that up, and hopefully not in a way that seems defensive, but in a way that we didn't expect, no direction in April and September. We got no direction, and therefore, what we said in December and April and September is, absent direction, a public procurement is highest-ranked application wins. Do you want that? And we got no other directions, so the recommended awards are a byproduct of these three activities that played out in sequence. That brings us to today. There are, there are a couple of actions that Larry will cover at the end, but I just want to highlight, the big funding actions are recommended awards, you have a slate in front of you, send the materials, and then you have a set-aside funding, which you approved. The set-aside funding grew, because at the September hearing, we said, if we don't have applications that line up perfectly in any particular part of the formula, we will put any unspent funds add to your set-aside funding. So those are two votes. I do want to articulate, before I do the next slide, which says what happened at the board this morning, I want to own that Kimberly and I made a choice, and counsel whether CAO, that we would recommend, so we said this verbally, you might want to consider, board, separating the votes. The vote of the recommended award is kind of a yes/no. Do you want to accept it or not, given this history? And if not, then the result of that might feed the set-aside, which is a second action, but if you, yes, then it narrows the second vote to what do you do with the set-aside? So that was articulated. And then we said, we talked about the set-aside, which you'll hear a little bit more about in the presentation. I want to end with where this is going. If your council approves some version of the recommended actions, we propose to come back to the board in the morning in April and the council in the afternoon, because we need to execute an MOU. Your council will work with our council, our staff will work with staff. We have a template that was worked on long and hard to use, and we would continue to use that template, just to make sure you're aware, because some of you were not here. The direction from your council that manifested in the form of the MOU was, because you put a million plus in the bucket, and we put a little under five million in the bucket, how do you pick which things to fund? The direction from your council last time was, you want your 1 million to be equitably spread for any of the recommended award slate, if the program promises to serve people in the city of Santa Cruz. So it ended up being programs that focused mostly on the city of Santa Cruz, or programs that focused countywide, including the city of Santa Cruz. And the only programs that were not funded by city funds were those that specifically would not serve city of Santa Cruz. So that direction was given, that formula was applied, it was put in MOU, and I just want to let you know that that's what you directed last time, and so that's how, that's what would come back. We would also give a contract update, because one of the big lessons learned last time, we had the Omicron variant, we're in an apocalypse, we did not get the, the decision made until June, and everyone said, you need more time, we need time to transition. So that's why we're here, seven months in front of, to do transitions, and we would give an update. And then lots of discussion this morning, we all, community, staff, and I think elected, think we got to tweak the framework, if not overhaul the framework, and that's up to and including, you know, if this is a lot to ask to work together on braiding this. So all of that would be a discussion in April. And then the contracts would be executed July. So I hope that was helpful. I know it was a big chunk of time, but I think that, like, with everything in your place, really sets up why and where we are and what's in front of you, which leads to the next slide. This morning, when I got here, I was told the city council, the city of Santa Cruz has long hearings, and we don't hit the board. Not true anymore. I think we were four hours, but it speaks to how much passion there is about this. So what happened this morning? I'm not going to go through the details unless you would like to hear them, I'll just kind of focus on the end result. In the end of the, in the end of the hearing, the board did vote three to two to approve the slate of recommended awards, with one caveat, and that was to take 5% out of all contracts and add it to the set-aside, so that there was more money for the board. So recommended awards approved by a three-two vote, as a singular vote, with the additional direction to take 5% off of all grants to add to the set-aside. So that was, that was the first decision. The second, if you'll bear with me, I'm just pulling up the picture so I can read to you. There was a lot of discussion back and forth, tons of public comment, lots of impassioned comment, and the end result was, the county's share of its 800-plus thousand, that turned into 900-plus thousand, was a commitment to, and this is what we'll be executing for county funds only, your action is independent, can choose to augment or not, $300,000 for Community Bridges Meals on Wheels program. And I, I have sent this to Em and Larry, so they have this written up, and I just want to verbalize it for public to hear. $150,000 to Grey Bears, $50,000 to Second Harvest Food Bank, $65,000 to Senior Network Services, $50,000 to Senior Legal Services, $60,000 to Community Action Board's Rental Assistance Program, $100,000 to Dientas, $50,000 to Diversity Center, $25,000 to Your Future is Our Business, $50,000 to United Way Cradle to Career, and last, $70,000 to Davenport Resource Center. So that was action number two, that we were directed to execute this morning. We did get approval to go ahead and execute the contracts for the county share, pending what happens today, and we did get direction to return. Lastly, before I turn over to Kimberly to walk through a little bit of summary of the materials, what we have talked to staff about is that if the direction you take today is to approve any contracts that were in the slate of proposals, through your recommended awards action or the set-aside, if agreeable on April 30th, when we execute the MOU, we would hold the contracts and then partner with you as we do now. If you choose to take this, the set-aside money, or move the money, which is your money, and do something else, but it's outside of the actual contract applications, we would ask that that be managed through whatever your process you want to do it for. So just sort of, you stay within the 100 applications that came in, through some actions you take today, we would, pending the MOU execution, manage those, which, like we're doing now. So I think that goes, the next slide is Kimberly will walk through a little bit of a summary of the next steps.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So Kimberly Peterson, Deputy Director from the County Human Services Department. So I'm just going to give a brief update regarding what has happened since I was last here in December. In particular, I'll take a moment to talk about the panel review and appeal process. So when I was here in September, I think I mentioned that we had recruited around 70 panelists. Not all of them were able to follow through with reviewing applications, some had various reasons they were not able to follow through, some people, a few were conflicted out, though we did ultimately have 60 panelists to review applications, they were divided among 20 different panels. All of the applications were reviewed according to the scoring rubric or scoring criteria that was published in the RFP. And they, they were trained on the rubric, the panelists scored each of the applications individually, and then they met with the other panelists who reviewed the same applications that they did, to discuss any variance in scores. As a part of the training for the panel reviews, we encouraged people to make comments as they were reviewing the applications. And because of the number of sections within the applications and areas to make, make, make a score and comment, we figure there are about 2,400 unique comments across all of the proposals. Once all of these scores were finalized by each of the individual panelists, then the Human Services Department took the average score from each, for each of the organizations, and applied that as the organization's final score, and applied it to the funding distribution list in a rank order that, excuse me, we applied the funding distribution formula that you approved in September, and ranked the applications from there. On October 4th, all applicants were notified of whether they were recommended for award or not, and then that opened a 10-day appeal period. 22 applications were appealed. Of those, six of the appeals were upheld, and two appeals that were upheld actually moved an organization from not being recommended for funding into the recommended category. So what you are seeing today, the total of 28 recommended awards, that includes those organizations who initially were not recommended for funding, but following the appeal were recommended for funding. Collectively, we feel that the scoring rubric, the training that's provided, the panelists reconvening to discuss in the variance of scores, and the appeals process, represents a checks and balance for this, for this process. Go to the next slide, please. So in a second, I will look at a high level of analysis of the recommended awards, but I wanted to take a quick moment to reaffirm and emphasize just a couple key points behind this process. The design of the core RFP has been iterative, and has been adjusted over time based on feedback from the prior cycle. I think Randy touched on this a little bit. And by definition, an RFP is a competitive process, and over the last few cycles, it's been a three-year funding period. So each time the three-year cycle ends, it's a new, clean slate, everybody starts at zero and applies for a new, new round of funding. There's no guarantee of continued funding unless a portion of funding is carved out for a specific organizational purpose. During this RFP, there were 100 applications received, and these, I've mentioned 28 awards recommended, and we received over four times the amount of funding was requested than what was available. The awards were made following the approved funding distribution formula, with the intent to spread the money across all of the application categories and to fund a higher number of proposals. There were no carve-outs or guaranteed funding for any agency or program, though there was a set-aside of monies, put aside for elected officials to put towards priorities that were not funded for the, through the competitive process. I do want to note and acknowledge that at the September 10th meeting, you as a city council did say that you wanted to prioritize childcare, and I know that the city staff will speak to that when I'm done. Next slide, please. For the recommended awards, you can see that, acknowledging there is limited funding and lots of need in the community, and many, many great programs offering, offering services, you can see that the recommended awards align very closely with the approved funding formula to spread the money across all of the application areas. The far-left column represents the core condition that applications applied for, and then the middle column represents the proportion of funding that was put to that category, and then far right is what was recommended. You can go and go to the next slide. So then for the recommended awards, we have heard questions regarding who's being served through the recommended awards. And overall, the awards align geographically and demographically with where there are higher concentrations of poverty and other needs. Looking at the tables on the slide, the couple takeaways here are that the geographic distribution of funding is similar to the last round. And I will note particularly, particularly for the city of Santa Cruz, your contribution to Core is about 20%, and the funding distribution that includes services to residents is about There's also, in terms of demographic services, there is an anticipated increase in the distribution of funding serving people of color in the community with these recommended awards. And one of the attachments in your materials has a lot more information and analysis regarding the recommendations, but for now, we can go to the next slide. So for those set-aside funds, the amount of funding set aside for elected officials to apply towards to apply towards areas they feel are priorities that weren't funded, the city council, you have 189,576,000 available to you to allocate however you wish. And in your staff report, there was a document, one of the last attachments, provided a series of options that you could consider on how to distribute this set aside funding, acknowledging again, it's limited funds and lots of need, and it's just really there for your consideration, but it's completely at your discretion. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Larry.
Here's what we're going to do right now. So if you'd just be kind enough, as I indicated earlier, if you were here earlier in our afternoon, there are four elected officials who are retiring from their public duties. And a few minutes ago, we had an opportunity to thank Congressmember Anna Eshu. And so what I'm going to do now is we're going to acknowledge two others. It'll just take a few moments, then we'll return to Core activity. So first, if I could ask to come forward, the supervisor for Supervisor Zach Friends, Allison Vialante, if you would come forward, I would appreciate that. Supervisor Friend is not able to be here today, and we are sorry for that because, as many of you probably know, Supervisor Friend worked in this government, and he worked in the police department, and he was very active in that regard and did a very good job. Moved on to be a county supervisor down in the mid-south county area, worked a lot on a range of issues during his time on the Board of Supervisors, did a very good job, very responsive to the constituents in his district, very thoughtful, intelligent, and somebody with, I'm not even a little bit ashamed to say it, a wicked sense of humor. And yes, I don't see anyone disagreeing with me about that, but a wonderfully talented person, and we very much appreciate. And Allison, I wonder if what you would do, I'm going to present you a resolution. Happens all the time. Nice plaque, you know that all the time, but we're going to give you something a little different today, and that is, we're going to give you a city flag of the City of Santa Cruz that flew over our city hall so that Supervisor Friend remembers this when he moved south to Coronado. He will remember the great city of Santa Cruz, and we want to thank him for all of his wonderful work. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. On behalf of Supervisor Friend, he is down at CSAC today, chairing the Health and Human Services Commission this morning, and actually, right now, he's meeting with FEMA Administrator Fenton, which is why he can't be here, otherwise he'd be here virtually himself, just the timing just didn't work out. So he, sorry he can't be with you all today. But on his behalf, I just really want to say thank you. As you know, as Mayor Keely said, mentioned, he didn't start, he was a very young man here working at the city directly, which I think helped launch him into, in his undergraduate years, into graduate school, into his career in public service. And so I just want to say thank you. It's been a long relationship with the city, both beginning then and then now, in his time as supervisor. You know, he does still consider, I know everyone assumes he's moving down to Coronado, but he still considers this home, and he has always long said that this is where he will return to, this is where he'll continue to have a relationship with. And so I just thank you so much. It's been a long and beautiful partnership, and so thank you so much for honoring him today. I appreciate it.
One final comment, and that is, one of the indicators of a good elected official is, good elected officials select good staff member, and you are among the very best staff member and your colleagues on the staff ranks for the supervisor. Please extend our thanks to them as well. Very best wishes to you.
Thank you so much.
Wishes to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Supervisor Bruce McPherson and Mary McPherson, I want you both coming up. Mary McPherson, you got to come up. Now, I'm not going to even wait until you show up. So Bruce McPherson, for those of you who may be a little bit new to these things, if you haven't been in the city of Santa Cruz very long, Bruce McPherson had two 25-year careers. Bruce McPherson was a city editor, actually, you were a reporter, and then a city editor, and then the editor of the Santa Cruz Sentinel. 25 years of really good work, serviced our community when it was important, and it still is, for us to have local news. And that is a real key to the democracy, not just we, MSNBC or Fox or whatever, local radio, local newspapers and local is so important. So Bruce, first of all, thank you for that. But Bruce decided, Bruce could have very easily, without any trouble whatsoever, just decided that he and Mary, 25 years in the Sentinel was plenty enough, and do off to whatever it is they wanted to do. But not surprisingly, I think that Bruce was, and Mary have such deep commitments to our community in so many areas, whether it's the MAW, name for your family because of the great contributions you've made, Bruce, and your family, your brother and others. But then Bruce decided he wanted to make a different kind of commitment and a different kind of contribution to the community, so he was elected to the California State Assembly. And when he did, he served us in a very important time when we needed bipartisan work done in Sacramento. This was a time when, it's not the time that it is now, where California was very clearly a blue state, very large Democratic majorities in both the Assembly and the Senate. That wasn't the case. And so Bruce was, at that time, was a Republican member, is now declined to state voter member. When I was able to get elected to the California State Assembly, Bruce was elected the same night to the California State Senate. And I'll just say this, for me and for others who served in that period of time, we needed to make sure that even if you got every single Democratic vote, you needed three or four Republicans in the Assembly and in the Senate. And so not one single important measure that was passed that helped out the environment, helped on homeless issues, held a wide range of important public policies, that Bruce McPherson was a stand-up person. And find a play in an important piece of legislation where people can come together and be able to make real progress. Bruce was termed out of the Assembly and the Senate, like I was, of the Assembly. There was a change in, a friend of mine, actually, who was dismissed as Secretary of State in a very unfortunate circumstance, and the governor had to make a decision about who is going to serve in California's Secretary of State. That is the important imposition in our community where all of the democracy hangs and abouts, because that balance was how the Secretary of State of California is the chief elections official. And Bruce stepped into that, not elected to the position, but appointed the appointed to this position, and did a great job without putting his thumb on the scale of elections in any way, shape of other, in any way. What happened then was that Bruce came home. And again, another instance where, in my view, Bruce and Mary could have had an opportunity to move it on to other activities. Bruce was elected county supervisor in the seat that I held, so he did a better job than I did when I was county supervisor. That's a difficult district because you are not only a county supervisor, you're sort of the mayor of the San Lorenzo Valley area. And so Bruce navigated to truce very complicated issues for very, very many areas and did a great job. So Bruce, I thank you for all of 25 years of journalism, and I want to thank you for, and I think my colleagues all want to thank you, for another career in public service and the gifts that you have given our community, you and Mary cumulatively. And I know that you have given plenty of proclamations. I know that you have given nice mementos. I know that when we were each in the legislature, it was an opportunity to give a flag of the state of California that was flown our state capitol. We have a flag for you, and this is a flag that was flown our city hall. And so I want to thank you for everything. I want to give an opportunity also for my colleagues to thank you as well. So let me do that. If you'd be kind enough to give the supervisor any comments you would like to give to him, please do so.
I'd be happy to, if that's okay. I just also want to echo our appreciation and sincere...
I'm having a real hard time.
You're right. Yeah, sincere honoring of your many, many years of service to this community and your love of this community and all the different capacities that the mayor mentioned, and we've been very grateful to have your leadership, and wish you the absolute best and your family in this next chapter of your life. So thank you so much for all your years of service.
Thank you, thank you. I think I can speak on behalf of almost everybody in Santa Cruz whose lives you've touched through journalism and through your leadership at the state and the county level, and just your tremendous ability to connect with the constituents and the community and really kind of see the forest for the trees. And I'm sure it's been a sacrifice to your family to give up the hours that he's dedicated to this work, but on behalf of everybody in Santa Cruz, we really thank you for your advocacy and your work at the county and the state, and I'm sure you've had some influence at the federal level as well. So thank you.
Supervisor McPherson, what an honor it's been to serve on some of the committees and commissions in this community with you. I have tremendous amount of admiration for who you are and how you show up and the way you do your work. I've learned so much from you, and even though you won't be in the same office, I hope to and plan to continue to learn from you. Just thank you so much for your dedication to our community and for fostering leadership in others. Thank you.
I will echo congratulations and thank you for all your work. And your district encompasses part of our city, and I too as well have served on boards and committees with you, and I appreciate your input and historical context that you've always brought and your ability to listen. And I think that's a really important quality in the work that we do. So thank you for being present and for investing in Santa Cruz. Appreciate it.
I just want to thank you as well for all of your great work to our community. You know, for my short amount of time in public service, it has been a joy and a real honor to serve with you on the boards that I have and to get to know you, and just really want to thank you for all the work you've done for the community. Thank you.
I would associate myself with the comments of my colleagues here, but I also want to add a couple of things based on my own experience working with you. One thing I didn't understand until you, and that was because I didn't understand it, until you came into your role on the Board of Supervisors, was that you are an incredible environmentalist, and you have been so committed to addressing climate change. And, you know, I just think that your leadership role in making Monterey Bay Community Power Now 3CE happen is a monumental achievement that is going to have lasting effects, not just in our county, throughout our region. Your effectiveness in moving that forward and making it what it is today, it really needs to be, I think, or I want to celebrate that with you. And also, now working, you know, being over at the county, I just so appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you approach all of these decisions and the care that you clearly have for your constituents. You know, you've had these positions, statewide positions, but at the end of the day, it's like you're fighting for the San Lorenzo Valley, for the people in your community, and you support all of us. So I really appreciate the time that we've got to work together and wish you all the best in your retirement. I'm going to put it in scare quotes because I am sure you will stay busy doing community, serving the public in other ways, and we just appreciate you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess and take, or you'll take your photos first?
I just want to make a couple of comments if I could. You know, what politician doesn't want to, you know, say something? Come on, I've still got six weeks left. Hey, I might run for reelection. That sounded good. Geez, it's too late for a write-in. No, I've thoroughly enjoyed my time in public service and in the newspaper as well, and I'm proud of the great inroads that we have made in the city-county relationship, and there have been plenty of them. The homelessness and affordable housing issue that is a crisis today, and we need to face it head-on. Public health through the pandemic response and how we cooperated and coordinated things with the city. The water resources and planning for the future of, we've got limited potential, although I guess there's going to be some rain coming here with water here. We don't have state and federal water coming to us, so we have to fend for ourselves, and it's limited. And I am proud to say that the county and the City of Santa Cruz did the best of anybody. You know, when we had those droughts, we did better than anybody in really implementing drought resistance. And now we have the Santa Margarita, the Mid-County groundwater agencies that are cooperative agencies to see how we can protect those water resources. That's critical. I think two critical things are water and energy, and thank you for those kind words. It's so great that you're so energetic in accepting Monterey Bay Community Power that's now Central Coast Community Energy in five counties down to Santa Barbara with 35 governing agencies. It's phenomenal. There's nothing like it in the nation, and it's because we had a cooperative effort. That's what made it work. It wasn't one person, me, for sure. That's what made it work, is people coming together and saying, hey, this is a good idea. It took us, what, a couple of years and 150 meetings, going to councils and supervisors and whoever, to say, this is a good deal, this is how it works, and it's not easy to explain sometimes, but you were at the front of the line to say, yeah, this is a good thing, let's keep going. So that's why it works, is because other people got into the mix. And public safety through the CCU fire and our evacuation orders and our cooperative efforts between the sheriff's office and the city police, we've really formed in this county, you know, with all the police agencies in the county, the police agencies, a cooperative venture that we can find out what the other ones are doing and get to it and provide that public safety to our constituents. And lastly, another big thing that comes to mind, libraries. I was on that committee that put that library bond on the ballot. We spread it out. We've got it from Boulder Creek to Santa Cruz, you know, down to South County. It's just, that's another thing. It's this, the way you get these things, you know, a community... It's this way, the way you get these things, you know, a community coming together, a county and its agencies, whether they be city councils or water agencies or libraries or whatever it might be, those have been really most satisfactory because so many people jumped on board and said, yeah, let's do this, this is a good thing. So I, I can't tell you how much I've appreciated the honor. There's been some moments in the Assembly and the Senate, and I didn't, I couldn't have a better colleague when I was, but when I became a supervisor, it's a nonpartisan office, which I think everything should be, but it'd be better for all of us. But working with your mayor, Fred Keely, on so many bond measures really related to parks and education in particular, time and time again. And to the point where in my caucuses, I became known as the squish because I'd always slide over to where Keely was, you know, so. But it's been an enjoyable ride. I've enjoyed working with many, many public officials. Fred Keely, there's nobody that I've enjoyed working with to the point where people were saying, how in the heck do you guys get along? And I wish we could have more of that today, and I, I just hope we can. But I just want to say that, you know, you've all done your, the service. Thank you for doing this. You know, there's nobody that feels better than somebody who gives, and whether it's time or other resources of some type. And I know that Martine, council member Martine Watkins and Sandy Brown are retiring too. I want to wish you the very best as well. This is over the top for me to say, you know, hello, goodbye to city of Santa Cruz, but I'm not going anywhere. We're going to be around, and I couldn't do without this young lady of 57 years. I married her when she was three, and that was a good deal. I had great foresight, that's one thing, you know, so. But no, I couldn't do it without her.
Very much, thank you. What we're going to do is take a five-minute break. I'm, I'm sorry this is dragging on, but I'm not terribly sorry, meaning I, this is an opportunity to thank people. We got to take care of a little bit of something right now, so we're going to take about a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to continue item 30 after that brief recess and the presentation to Supervisor McPherson, and I'm going to hand it back off to Mr. Mwali. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. Wait for the PowerPoint to return. Prior to our break, where Kimberly Peterson had left us was articulating what the set aside amounts were as part of the core funding process. And so I wanted to briefly go through the options that were provided in your staff, the staff report for this item to consider for set aside. Again, this is completely discretionary funding at the council's discretion. So both for the Board of Supervisors and the city council framed an array of options to look at the proposals that were not recommended, that could be considered for the set aside, a variety of ways. And the detail on the staff report identifies, looking through these different lenses, those proposals that were among the highest scoring under those different kinds of options. So the first option that was presented was just looking at the next highest ranked proposals across all core conditions and tiers. So under the premise of RFP, best proposal wins, what are the next highest scoring proposals regardless of which tier or condition? The other approach that you can consider is prioritizing funding in a particular specific core condition, or you could do similarly, option C, you could look at funding with any particular tier. And then the fourth option, option D, is in response to the direction the council provided on September 24th, articulating childcare as a priority area. So staff, after September 24th, pulled those proposals, and if you could advance the slide. There were two childcare proposals among the 100 applications submitted to the core process. Those were the Walden Avenue Early Education Center that requested 128,000, and then the Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center, which requested just over 107,000. So the set aside, if you recall before the break, there's 189,576. There's certainly enough to fund one childcare proposal if that is the desire of the council. There'd still be a balance of approximately $61,000, but can't quite fund two full proposals based off what the set aside is. But that is the options if the council desires to move forward with the childcare option. So the recommended actions before you this evening, approve the recommended awards, those are the 28 recommended awards that were provided, to provide direction to staff on the recommended set aside funding, using any of those options or other options that the council desires because it is discretionary. And then further to direct staff to coordinate with the county on the development of contracts. And then we'll be returning by April 3rd, April 30th, 2025, with updates in the contracting process, lessons learned, and next steps moving forward. So with that, we'll entertain questions and comments.
Okay, from my colleagues?
I have some questions. They're going to be pretty specific, and I think they're probably more for the county staff, but I'll just put them out there. First, I want to, and I apologize that these are sort of to the, to the community for, they're going to sound random and out of context, but I, I want to ask them here and get clarity. Is it true that 60% of the panelists, the reviewers for these applications were county staff members? And if so, who selected them? We've received some information about demographics and that they were selected, but I'm unclear who did the selecting, and is it true that 60% were county staff? That's my first question. Yeah, and I've got several more if I could.
So that was in attachment D. I'm actually just referencing that.
Okay.
And yes.
And who, is who selected them included there? I did not see that.
No, but I can speak to that.
Great.
So 60% of the staff, excuse me, 60% were county employees. And this is what I was trying to get to earlier. We had recruited over 70 panelists, but we cannot always control who is able to follow through with the process. There were some community members who had previously volunteered and then stepped out of the process, and there were about three who conflicted out. And so we try very hard to get as many people as possible to participate on panels, though it's just, we've frankly ran out of people and we actually had to continue to try and recruit more. I don't know if that helps, I just don't, I don't want you to seem like we're picking and choosing, we're really trying to, yeah.
So again, who is "we"?
The, the core, the core team.
And who would that be?
There were a couple of our division director and a manager.
Division director from HSD?
Yes.
Okay, and, and a manager in HSD?
Who works with that person.
And you, and?
I did not, I did not.
So just, that's, those two are the core team?
No, the core team is larger, I'm sorry. Can I ask what, what you're trying to get at?
I'm trying to understand how the reviewers were selected, by whom? Because I want to get a better understanding of what I'm hearing about the experiences of some panelists, for example, who felt that they were bullied by county staffers who were on those panels. I don't really want to talk about this in public, I just want to get an understanding of, you know, how it came to be that the particular people who were reviewers were selected, by whom?
So we, there was a, a survey that went out to a number, went out broadly, including to commissioners, to city and county and community partners, seeking volunteers to participate as panelists in the core process. People who completed that survey would identify what their experience was related to the, to the core conditions. And then we would take those applications and then, excuse me, those survey results and then send them information about, okay, here's the time period, here's the training.
I, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I understand you, you gave a pretty clear overview of that on that, that demographics page. I'm just trying to understand, again, who made the decision? Because it's, at the end of the day, these decisions are going to have significant impacts on the safety net in our community. And, you know, and I'm, and I have been very critical of the process, I'm going to continue to be critical of the process, and I am going to do everything in my power from this seat while I still have it and into the future to ensure that nothing like this ever happens again with the taxpayers' money. I am so upset, I cannot, I mean, I just can't describe. And I am not passionate about this because human services is my passion. I am passionate about this because there are people who are going to literally not get food in, because we have decided that through an opaque process, which I'll, I'll save that for my comments, sorry, I could go on, but I'll save that for my comments, and I have quite a few, but I want to finish with my questions. What percentage of panelists were from Santa Cruz County? Because I also have heard that there were panelists who were not local. I'd like to know what percentage that might have represented and how those folks were selected. I hear you did a, a call out. I don't know anybody who was invited to be a panelist, so it's hard for me to understand how wide that, that call went out, to whom. I still, I'd like, if you could answer that, that would be very helpful. But I also want to know about, you know, how many people came from out of the county as, you know, we are making decisions about local services.
Right, so I'll, I'll try to respond, and I feel like I do need to clarify that the recommendations did not come directly from the panelists, the panelists just scored applications and then we, we applied, we took that information.
Yeah, we can talk about semantics all day long, but I don't want to do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there wasn't a misunderstanding. So there were about, for people who represented, who were from other jurisdictions, often like other similar social services or county governments, there was 6% of the panelists came from other jurisdictions for, if that's what you're, you're asking, for some of the people who, I think also we have, for people who, did I answer your question? Are you wanting to know? Okay. I'm sorry, I think you had a follow-up question that I might have missed.
Well, you know, I'm accustomed to not actually getting answers to the questions I ask about this process, so that, that's enough. It's kind of, it feels like it's, it's pretty staff-driven, you know, so, so all the way from the start, it's designed for, you know, certain people to be included in this decision-making process.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, you asked, I, I apologize. You also asked where, who was invited, and so the, we sent the survey inviting people to please let us know if you're interested in participating to all of the county commissions. We also sent it to the city to share with, with other staff or however broadly is needed. We sent it to, there's a core distribution list with this, which is pretty broad, so we sent it there, we posted it on our Facebook page, we reached out to all of the people who had participated as panelists before. Some of us made individual phone calls to people who had been community leaders and we thought might participate. I will say that recruiting panelists is almost like, like, like sales, that you put a lot of, you like try to get more than what you really need because the proportion of people who are able to participate is so much smaller.
I, I understand that, I mean, those are general limitations. I'm talking about the specific problems I see with this one. I, I get it. When the, so now I have a question about the scores. When, having been on panels myself, I generally, a best practice is for the, however many panelists it is, for to look at those scores and to average the, aggregate whatever, you know, to put those together. When there are outliers, to, to look at that and to adjust accordingly. Was anything, did any of that happen? Were there adjustments made? Because I, I'd like to, and I'd like to hear the truth because I have already heard from organizations who have told us that that did not happen, given that we as elected officials were not able to look at any of that information unless it was offered to us by the applicants, which some of it has been. It's very interesting to see what has been denied to the elected officials, helps us understand what, you know, what these potential effects are going to be. So I'd like to know how that was handled, where you had outliers that then knocked applicants out of the running because of their score was reduced, where you had, you know, say, for example, an organization that got scores in the mid 90s on two of their, their reviews and a 70-something on another one.
So.
How'd that work?
So we, it's during those panel reconvening, reconvening meetings, there was intentionally meeting set up for the panelists to discuss variance in scores. During those conversations, it's, it's a chance for the panelists to check on misunderstandings, check, you know, perspectives, and then they have an opportunity to adjust their scores if they feel like they missed something and wanted to reconsider it. So those did happen, and then the panelists could change or not, and then they submit their final scores to us, as I described earlier. The staff did not go and adjust any panelist scores because as, it's the RFP, they're, they're panelists, they, they, we, that would be not really in line with the process for us to go and manipulate their scores. So I'm, I'm not sure if I'm asking your question, answering your question, but yes, the meetings happened, and yes, ultimately in the RFP, the reviewers, they score as they score. I know that some, some of the appeals, that, some of that may have been behind some of the appeals, but those, those meetings did happen as they would in, in most procurements.
But, so just to be clear, when there was a significant outlier, that score was not eliminated or weighted in some way as is a best practice, at least on a lot of the panels I've been on in the past? That did not occur, correct?
Not, no, no. I think, I can tell you that if there was, generally speaking, if there was an outlier far below or far ahead, if we were to do like throw out those scores and then take some other action, that would have had to be, been done in both areas, if somebody was severely higher or severely lower.
All right.
But I don't, don't believe that happened.
Okay, now I'd like to move on to questions about the, the, let's see. I, I'd really like just to just hear how much the core consulting firm receives annually. I've asked for this information, I've been told it's not available, and it turns out it was available, and I, but I was only able to get, find a contract for one year. How much have the consultants been paid over the past, let's say, three years annually, back of the envelope? I can tell you for '23, '24, but I'd like to know about some of the other years.
So it is public information, those contracts are available.
They're very hard to find, though.
We have provided them when people have asked.
So then what, can you, can you give me a sense of what's in them?
I can tell you what the, the core contracts have done. So first of all, the contract initially, its optimal solutions are the core consultants. They were initially contracted through an RFP process, actually done at the direction of the board. And over time, their, their services have adjusted based on, based on the time that we're in.
I'm sorry, I don't, I, I feel like the questions I'm asking are dragging this meeting out, and so I don't want to, I don't mean to keep cutting you off, but I understand that, you've described that in the documents. What I'm trying to understand is how much we have spent on consultants to create a process that has led to the outcome that we are seeing today.
I just wanted to step up because when I gave my presentation, I spoke to board action this morning on the core item. The chair of the board, who you work for in your other capacity, pulled a consent item, which is a different action, so I want to make sure the whole council knows, which was to pull that particular contract, and there was a 5-0 vote this morning to end that contract. I do also want to say, I feel it's important to share that in your other capacity, your office at the county requested, and a year and a half ago, we provided every single contract that has been procured. and a half ago, we provided every single contract that has been procured. So you have that in your other job. And your office asked again, and we sent the most recent two that were not provided. But for the Council to know that this particular contract was terminated effective through the 30-day clause as of Board Action this morning.
That's, that's helpful to hear. I do want to also acknowledge, Mr. Morris, that in, with respect to my other duties, because this is a conflict of office question, I do not participate in the conversations with you and your office about CORE. I do not communicate with you about CORE. I am here as a city council member, asking these questions with these concerns. Yes, I do share those with my current, with the supervisor. Those are concerns that we shared as colleagues on this city council. I do not participate, at least not until next month, in those conversations. So
No, no city money goes, went to those contracts either, just to know.
Gotcha. But it's about $370,000 a year is what I'm, is my sense.
This past year, it had actually been reduced by about $100,000, but it had been higher. We upped it during the COVID time period because of the amount of work and lack of staff available to support.
Gotcha. So for the community and the nonprofits, that's almost 10% of the available money from the county. 10%.
And it's not all general fund. I just feel like it's important to know it's not money that could just be used for other CORE grants.
Understood. And we go back and forth all day, and I don't want to belabor this with my colleagues because I am one person, but I am, I am very concerned about what the impact is going to be in our community. And so I think it's important for you all to be accountable to the questions that elected officials have when we are spending taxpayer dollars. My, my next question is a bigger question, and that is, you know, we've, we've been told, it's a little bit of a counter to part of the presentation. We've been told, well, you've all been asked, you know, and we want your feedback, and we're surprised when you don't give us more direction. But I sat here in September, or I guess in October because we had to postpone it, and you told us, we actually don't have a choice. So to tell us on the one hand, we do not have a choice because everything's already all tied up and, and a done deal, and then to say, we're surprised that you don't have suggestions, is just, that you are, that is false. That is just false. And I want people to know that. So I'm going to, again, go ahead. You know, we can, we can do a tit-for-tat offline about it. But right now, I am concerned about the decision before us, which is going to effectively eliminate significant services for our most vulnerable neighbors because of a process that I believe is moribund. So my last question is, given that you would like for us to provide feedback, and this is a question also for you, Mr. Imwali, feedback about how to use, set aside money for critical needs. And, and the, most of the money has been recommended for distribution based upon panelists reviewing applications. People were actually able to see that information, albeit limited information. I've got comments on that to come. But given that we are not able to even see the applications, to know what services, unless we hear from these community programs, how are we to make informed decisions about where to allocate those dollars? And at this point, what it feels like is much worse than what we used to have, where all the programs came and begged for the big pot. Now we have a small, smaller pot. Some of it goes, you know, some of the, we now spend money on consultants to keep it further away from the elected officials. And we have the same problem with the crumbs of the crumbs. So how are we supposed to make decisions to ensure that we are responding to significant community need and priority without even being able to see the information about what program, what the services will be? So what's your expectation of us here, is I guess my, my question? And how do we make those decisions, in your mind?
I note the tone and content of your questions. I'm disappointed. What's happening here is what the Congresswoman just spoke to as the problem in our democracy. So it's very noteworthy. On April 30th, we came to your council and you were seated and shared, like we did today, what happened at the board. Your city council can always change its decision, but has passed and had been saying it will have the administration of the contract done through the county. So at April 30th, there was a discussion specifically about the county procurement process. There was a specific motion by Chair Cummings to change the process to allow elected officials to review the applications. Public procurement processes, state, federal, county, city, generally do not include elected officials. So I just want to be clear, trying to follow what I think you're getting at, it's difficult to follow, separating the hats, the county had the decision to make about what, to follow the county procurement process. A four-to-one vote was passed to follow the procurement process. So we followed direction. We shared that with your council, and what that means is it's a closed bid process. So we followed the direction.
I am not asking you to defend the process, and I am not interested in being gaslit about a process that has significantly undermined the ability of community programs to provide critical safety net services. So you can go ahead and do it, but I reject that. I am here because I care about these programs. I care about the people who are served. And that is my responsibility as an elected official.
Did we not answer your question? I'm not sure I followed it then.
Well, you, you gave me an explanation of why the county board of, why my boss didn't, didn't get his way, and I am now, and it appears to be, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I am just, I am just very unclear about why
Point of order. If I may, I understand your frustration, and this seems to have gone a little bit off track to what we are here to set to do.
I understand that. And I, what I'm saying is, I don't want to be gaslit about a different relationship that I have and a different decision-making body, because that is not what we are here about. I want to understand why we don't have sufficient information to make our decisions. And you're telling us, go ahead and make decisions, and then coming back and telling us, well, you really can't because it's already a done deal. That is my concern. And I'm not getting the answers. It's fine. But I am, I am just, I just need, I think that the community deserves to hear it. And that's why I'm saying it here.
Thank you for your questions. Is there anybody else up here with questions this evening?
I'm just, I'm going to save questions and comments till after.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and let the members of
Can I ask your question?
One second, sir. I'm going to go ahead and call on members of the public to come up and make your comments and questions. I'm going to change it from three minutes to two minutes. And we're going to go in between online and in person. So Bonnie, why don't we start, is there anybody online? Okay. So why don't we start with online while the people in chambers line up? Thank you. Person online. You have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Al Brigann, and I'm a resident of Santa Cruz. I'm also the parent of Rowan, who is a year and a half, and attends the Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center. Rowan has flourished since they started going to the toddler center in August and loves getting to learn and play outside and connect with their peers. Their teacher and all the teachers there is incredibly attentive to their needs, and I have so much appreciation for the level of respect that she shows Rowan and all their peers. And I see the impact of that treatment in Rowan's confidence and independence. As I'm the sole financial provider for Rowan, I rely on a scholarship to afford their monthly tuition. There's a good chance that the scholarship program will not be able to continue if the toddler center has denied core funding. If that happens, there's a good chance that Rowan will not be able to continue attending the toddler center. I rely on the childcare that the toddler center provides so I can continue working and attending grad school for my Master of Social Work. As a social worker, I do understand the immense need for core funding to support the well-being of the diversity of vulnerable populations in our community. And I recognize the tragedy that we're in a position in which necessary programs are having to compete with each other for this funding, which indicates the overarching need for increased funding for social welfare in this county. And as a parent invested in working to improve the conditions of the diverse populations of vulnerable people in this county, I really don't know what other childcare options I'll have to be able to do that if Rowan can't continue going to the toddler center, because there really aren't many options for us in Santa Cruz. Rowan deserves access to quality childcare as much as their peers with access to more money. And I encourage you to go with option D and include the Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center as a recipient of core funding allocated for childcare, so that the wonderful and necessary care they provide can remain accessible to children from a diversity of socioeconomic backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Next speaker? If you could state your name too, for the record, that would be helpful.
Sure. I am Sheri Storm. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for DeAntis Community Dental Care, and I am the co-chair of Oral Health Access, Santa Cruz County. Recently, I spoke to you about the importance of oral health, the issues that many face in our community, and what we're doing to address those needs. Your unanimous support of Measure Z shows you understand how vital oral health is. Today, I'm here to advocate for DeAntis' core proposal, which was not recommended for funding, but is key to the health and well-being of our community. Our proposal impacts 1,000 low-income seniors by providing critical healthcare. Dental care is not about maintaining, just about maintaining smiles, but preventing serious diseases like heart disease, diabetes, and malnutrition, all of which stem from untreated oral health issues. DeAntis' work is specialized and unique. We're the largest provider of dental care in Santa Cruz County, and we need core funding to support and maintain this care. We ask that you support using set aside money as outlined in option A. This would fund DeAntis' proposal and ensure that we continue providing essential healthcare to thousands of low-income seniors. I know that this is a very difficult decision that you have in front of you, and I really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker online. Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Savannah Parks, and I'm a parent at the Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center as well. My son has had the privilege to go to this nonprofit, and the reason that we can do this is because of the generous scholarship program that is provided. I can't begin to explain how vital of an experience this daycare has been for him. The financial and mental relief it brings to my family to know that he is so well taken care of, he has nutritious, organic foods and diapers, all included, at an affordable cost, is invaluable to our family. We would not be able to afford to send him to daycare with this level of care without their scholarship program. Please reconsider funding this program as it has quite literally changed my family's life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person in line?
Good afternoon. My name is Janice Bolt, and I am a member of the Board of Directors of DeAntis Community Dental. And I am one of those 1,000 seniors that were referred to by Sheri Storm just a moment ago. I would urge you to consider this program. All of us who are on fixed incomes in this county take advantage, hopefully, of the services that are provided, such as, everything on my body today came from gray bears, except for my shoes and other things. And I also feel that those of us who are able to get around and do things in the community deserve the respect in our last quarter of life to have support from you and obviously from the Board of Supervisors. We thank you very much for your consideration. It's always a pleasure for me, by the way, to advocate for DeAntis, because not only am I a patient, I'm a senior patient, and I'm in there with a mix of patients from all over the walks of life that we experience here in this county. And I see the work that is done. And yes, I can go and buy used clothes and go out to lunch once in a while, but what I can't do is have an X-ray machine and deep cleaning and care that I would never, ever be able to afford out of my pocket. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you for hanging in here with us this evening. Next caller in line?
Hi, Clay Camp, Executive Director of the Seniors Council. And I'm just disappointed to have to say that the core effort has been a complete failure. Some of the decisions or recommendations before you, I just think are laughable. And in the highly competitive processes of the past 32 years, which I've been part of, there were winners and losers. But I always felt that we were moving forward together as a county and city, and there was hope for where we were going to end up. The progress was being made. But this cycle, we're talking about 80% of the programs that make up our local safety net being defunded. That is not how you maintain a social safety net. You don't change the funding every three years. You have to keep that intact. You can't start all over from scratch. So I really urge this council to address that change and try to mitigate such drastic undercutting of the current safety net. My agency right now is undergoing a $2 million procurement ourselves. And imagine if in that, I came forth and said, we're going to defund nursing home protection. We're going to defund legal services. We're going to defund meals programs. But in place of that, we're going to teach kids how to surf. We're going to provide boat trips for the seniors that have been abused in nursing homes. And we're going to lecture the people who no longer have food about the healthy food that they should be eating. That is part of the proposal you're receiving today and being asked to approve of? That's not okay. I hope my board and my advisory councils would tell me to go back and fix that before you move forward and approved it. I hope I couldn't get away with that. And I hope you won't let county staff get away with those recommendations today, because they're counterproductive for our community.
Thank you.
Make this program something we can be proud of again.
Thank you for your comments. Next person in line, please? Good evening. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Jane Doyle, and I was the chief of Children's, you know, of Public Health Services when DeAntis was founded. And I also served on the cab board for a number of years. And so I'm speaking largely from those perspectives. What I originally wrote to send to all of you, aside from my computer programs, is not quite accurate now, because I have heard a little bit more about what has happened with this program. But frankly, I'm not happy about the program. And I'm particularly unhappy about the fact that it sounds like, like, safety net is not a priority in this. In this hard time, the county doesn't have a lot of money, extra money, to provide the safety net. But this is one of the ways that people get it. So I started out writing here saying, I had breakfast. If you wanted breakfast, you probably had it. You probably had a snack to get you through these long hours that you put in all the time here, which I do appreciate. But the fact is, we all know that we don't work well on empty stomachs, and that children don't learn on an empty stomach. So by not prioritizing any of the food programs, that is really, what's, where's health in all things? These kids need the food, and so do the adults. I can't imagine being homebound and not having meals on wheels. These are what keep us going as the very basic part of the, of the society. And I'm very seriously concerned that this core program does not put safety net first. Next time you're looking for a reviewer, I think I'd like to be interested in help, helping the program to get a little more focused on that topic.
I think I know where you can ask. Thank you very much for that. Oh, next person online.
Good evening, Council. Bradley Snyder. So I, yeah, I just, I recognize Sandy's disaffection with the feeling of being gaslit. I recognize that, I guess, taking away the safety net, you know, I remember Fred talking about kind of how heartbreaking it is to make decisions about You know, I remember Fred talking about kind of how heartbreaking it is to make decisions about, you know, donations to some of these agencies. I personally, I was gaslit between my comments earlier about the crime wave and about out-of-town developers. My computer locked me out of my Google account when I came home. I was like, "Oh, that's rare." And I had to hack my way into my own account, so, you know, you can be gaslit in so many ways in life. But I think, I think one thing, I think that still probably getting a pretty substantial amount of funding is the United Way in these recommended awards. And, you know, I also, I also feel like, you know, I'll be out there handing out hot chocolate if I, if I, you know, if I have the means to do so to people who are, let's just say, under the weather this holiday season. But, yeah, in some ways, you know, I think there's a real passing, passing of the torch with the, I don't see any Bernie crats other than Justin in local government anymore. I could be wrong. I'm not, I'm not the biggest fan of Bernie. I'll tell you, I'll tell you why, because he's, just like Gavin Newsom, he's very, very [BLEEP] red.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Thank you for your comments. Next person in line.
Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Stephen Bosworth. I live on Pacific Avenue North. I, we got some more news tonight, I understand. I was at the county board meeting this morning, learned a lot there. And it seems, like, very clearly confirmed that the board, the majority of the board, decided not to do what is obvious, it seems to me, to any research. That is, they should set the criteria by which they would judge the programs for funding. They did not do that. And I'm surprised that the specialists did not say they should do that. They have to start, any organization has to start with their fundamental values, their aims, their mission, their objectives. They did not do that. Instead, they, what they did was pay for a consultant, maybe before or after, I don't know, but if it was a consultant after, then the consultant should have known that. Instead, you paid, all, everybody in the county paid almost $30,000 for a broken system. Without those values clear, the questions being asked of the various suppliers, wouldn't, what do you say about them? The answers? You're not, you can't judge them. What do the scores mean that are given to them? You don't know what they mean. They're all subjective decisions made by different people, and you don't know what they mean. But you can gather them up in some way, adding numbers to them, adding up the totals, and you get some rubbish information. And then, then what happens is all these organizations that have served the county well all this time
Thank you for your comments.
are not even being, their answers are not being addressed.
Thank you.
That was never a part of the investigation. How well these institutions
Okay, thank you. You've gone way over your time.
Before.
We're done. Thank you. We're moving on. Next person in line?
Hi, everyone. My name is Lori Egan, and I'm the Executive Director of the Coastal Watershed Council. CWC applied to Core for two programs that both serve the city of Santa Cruz. First, our Watershed Rangers Youth Environmental Education Program, and secondly, River Stewards, engaging people experiencing homelessness through the downtown streets team and river restoration. As this council has decided to focus discretionary funding on early childhood education and care, I want to draw your attention to our Watershed Rangers program and advocate that you support a combination of Options B and D and the options presented to you tonight. Watershed Rangers has a strong track record of engaging elementary-aged youth in need in the City of Santa Cruz School District, who otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to get outdoors to improve their science skills and social-emotional development. These are research and evidence-based practices that impact Watershed Rangers for a lifetime. The program has been funded in the past two core funding cycles, and this year received a nearly perfect score of 98. And it was a higher score than many of the other proposals which were actually funded. To support early childhood education, I think you can combine Options B and D by partially funding four proposals. Under Option B, looking at city-serving programs, there's Coastal Watershed Council, Boys and Girls Club, Walnut Avenue, as well as, under Option D, Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center. Collectively, this would provide childcare, supportive places for students out of school, and outdoor experiences, science skills, and social-emotional development. Partially funding four programs allows for more programs to remain operational. Moreover, none of these programs received any funding this morning from the county's discretionary funds. So CWC respectfully requests $25,000 so that Watershed Rangers does not have to close its doors to students in the Santa Cruz City School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Egan. Is my mic off? Oh, no, it's on. Thank you, Ms. Egan, and please extend my thanks to Sam and the rest of the crew for the good work they do at my school, in my day job. Are there any other speakers online? Okay, so we're gonna just continue with the line. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Alicia Riley. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Brown for your courage earlier. It was really inspiring and important to me to hear that. This is the first time I've come here. I'm here as a mom, a working mom. I'm also here as an epidemiologist. And I want to speak to, you've seen me here for almost four hours now. I was also at the county in the morning. I gave up my whole day to this issue, because as I began to dig deeper and think about core funding, I had major concerns that Councilmember Brown already voiced. I'm a researcher who has spent 15 years, a PhD, three master's degrees focused on health equity. And I want to tell you that, that a lot of the core stuff smacks of buzzwords and a lack of evidence. And I wanted to focus in on, on one thing that evidence does say, which is that zero to three years old really matters for our health. Our first three years of life, it matters for health. So much so that, an example, Nobel laureate James Heckman has done research that has shown that $1 invested in early childhood care and education, this is before kindergarten, turns into $7.16 in terms of returns, reduced involvement in crime, more educational attainment, lower teen pregnancy rates, better mental health, better physical health. And so all of this is going to pay us back. We are now set to defund childcare here for six years in a row. Please don't allow that to happen. The Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center is a gem in our community and has been so for almost 50 years. You know, they tell me, as a new parent, I have a 14-month-old that I have to run home to now. They tell me, you know, "The days are long, but the years are fast." And that's precisely why it's such a win-win to invest in supporting the Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center, because they can touch so many lives in such a short period of time. So thank you.
Thank you for coming out, and thank you to everybody who's been waiting here a long time. I see everybody's been waiting really patiently, so we really appreciate all that you have to say. So next person in line?
Hello, my name's Joshua Patstone. In representation of Santa Cruz Barrios Sanillos. The county almost decided to use $108,000 of discretionary funds to fund Barrios Sanillos, but unfortunately, last minute, it did not pass. And thank you, Councilmember Brown, for giving some pushback. Some of the criticism and doc points, one reason was the reviewer wished that we could have provided more information on why marginalized communities face inequities, or how education leads to lower poverty levels. Given the limited word count, I don't think it's fair for organizations to give a history lessons to reviewers, but rather focus on what we're gonna do to solve the problem. But I understand that the reviewers may not be familiar with Barrios Sanillos, but I know that many of you are. We've been in this community for over 45, 47 years now. Hundreds of people line up for food each week. We serve on holidays. We serve rain or shine. Thousands of community members are fed through our programs. But what makes us unique is we provide wraparound services. It's not just a food pantry. It's not just a youth program. We work around the clock to provide services for at-risk youth. We stop them from being absorbed by gang culture, absorbed by substance use, and we give them a safe space on our property on SoCal to access food, education, to access mental health services. We need the support. We do not receive considerable funding from the city or county. And a lot of the people, great organizations that did receive the funding, they often send their youth and send their clients to us to receive services that they can't provide. And they also receive additional funding from the county and city. We want to start building a relationship with our local government so that we can continue the legacy that this great organization has provided.
Thank you. Next person in line?
Thank you. I'm not a public speaker, but I do my best. I'm Carol Saff, and I'm with Santa Cruz Barrios Sanillos going on 24 years. And Josh did say a lot of what I would like to have said as well. But a couple of things that I really resonate with me is that our founder and executive director is both Apache and Mexican-American. And he has had the insight to see what is needed of people, and with no funding, he has jumped in, and we all jump in with him, to provide what is needed in the community. And as Josh said, you know, we see a lot of organizations getting a great deal of money, and I don't want to pick organizations against organizations, because we all have our, you know, positive things. But we were open throughout the entire COVID, never closed. There were several of us that have cert training that we, in health, that we knew how to do it safely. And also with the fires. And it's pretty much a 24-hour gig, you know? People come in and, and we open the doors. There is just really no closing down, and yet, we don't get funded, you know? And it, we're still gonna serve the people regardless, because they're, you know, the community matters. But we also have indigenous teachings incorporated in all of our community. Nani had racial justice and equity prior to ever becoming of the new buzzword after COVID. You know, and it seems like we just keep getting passed over. And funding would help us to serve people better, and probably more. But we're still gonna show up, no matter what. But we would like your support, and I know the Corps is doing what they can do, but I think there was a lot of, thank you, Sandy Brown.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Next person in line?
Good evening, and thank you all for your service. I am Julie, Executive Director of Walnut Avenue Family and Women's Center and co-chair of Santa Cruz County's Childhood Advisory Council. I'm also a city resident and consumer of childcare services. I'm gonna skip over some stuff to stay in the two minutes. Childcare is an essential, basic need for working families. State-subsidized childcare centers like Walnut Avenue bring millions of state and federal dollars into this community, providing, provide employment opportunities for highly skilled childcare workers, and most importantly, deliver high-quality, safe, and caring early learning environments for our youngest community members during the most significant brain development period of a child's life. Early education builds protective factors for children and families, counteracts potential long-term effects of trauma and adversity. It's one of those upstream preventative practices which provides a community of support for children, as well as opportunities for early detection and intervention for families who struggle with intergenerational cycles of poverty, violence, and system involvement. The Childhood Advisory Council's 2023 Needs Assessment found that Santa Cruz County only has enough subsidized infant toddler slots, that's the 0-2 age, who aren't gonna be old enough for universal pre-K, to meet 26% of the need. So for 74% of low-income families with an infant or toddler, finding childcare is extremely difficult and/or extremely expensive. Lastly, I wanted to say that if equity is at the center of our funding choices, I want to point out that without affordable, accessible, high-quality childcare for all income levels, there is no equity. There is gentrification and displacement of beloved community members. So I want to thank you for prioritizing early education, and I hope you will continue to do that in your funding decisions. Thank you.
Thank you for your work and for coming this evening. Next speaker in line, please?
Hi, my name is Catherine McCormick, and I'm the COO at Monarch Services. And I am here to formally request that you delay the vote on the core funding. We put through two proposals. Both were denied. And this is what pays for our therapy services. So this means that we will not continue to offer it. We won't be able to. We do not have other subsidies for this. This means that a child that we see that was raped by an adult family member will not receive therapy for their family. We will refer it back to the county, but we work with highly specialized therapists who work with these individuals, who are highly trained. And this is so important for them to break these cycles of generational abuse and trauma. It is imperative that we have this funding. So we are here to advocate for that, and also to say that there were 17 nonprofit organizations that provide critical services that were currently funded by Core that are no longer being suggested with the staff recommendations. So this will mean a substantial reduction in senior care, early childhood, as well as these type of sexual assault services and domestic violence. We were also a domestic violence center, and we were also not funded under that. So with that.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking tonight. Next speaker, please?
Hi, I'm Aries, and I work for the Volunteer Center of Santa Cruz County Empowered Aging Program. The first thing I want to say is that equity without evidence is absolutely nothing. The outcome of today's vote is not an equitable outcome when there's an active disregard for how it impacts people. When I say that I work at Empowered Aging for the Volunteer Center, you're probably seeing in your heads a building, or an agency, or maybe our website. But I want you to look at the people behind this. I'm a transgender person who stands to lose their job. This job is the only place I've ever felt safe as a transgender person. I'm scared to leave my workplace. When we look at where this funding goes, we're failing to address the needs of people, staff, participants, and our community as well. I work at the Volunteer Center, but I've also gone to therapy at the Diversity Center and facilitated support groups for trans people at the Diversity Center. I've been a victim of domestic violence, and so I volunteered at Walnut Avenue. When my little sister was sexually assaulted, I called Monarch and Walnut Avenue. So when you are cutting these support programs, including mine, you're cutting people who have multifaceted needs that do not start with learning how to surf or going on a whale-watching trip. The participants who use our services number in the hundreds. One of my participants fell and was on the floor for over an hour screaming. They did not make it to my class that day. Without services like mine, that is the reality that you are looking forward to when you age into this group. Participants who need a ride to get food, or chemotherapy, or lifesaving medications are not going to get that. So I want you to think of yourself at age 70 and how you'd like to be cared for by the community, and then vote to make this a reality for my participants. I want you to ensure that the Volunteer Center Empowered Aging Program will continue to be funded. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking with us tonight. Next person in line?
Hi there, I'm Nora Caruso, Co-Executive Director at the Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center. I want to be really clear about what happened this morning with the Board of Supervisors. They voted again to completely eliminate childcare from core funding. Zero. Joe Biden said, "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." I very much appreciate that this council is saying that you want to put some set-aside for childcare. Thank you. Thank you for letting us do the work so that we can help the city members to be able to work and let our economy thrive. Thanks in part to a decades-long partnership with you. The Toddler Center has been successfully providing affordable, high-quality childcare for low-income families with one- and two-year-olds for almost 50 years. I understand it's the intention of Core to no longer provide consistent funding to any agency and rather try to spread out the funds to multiple new agencies. This is short-sighted. As nonprofits can't continue to provide services without consistent funding, it's just not sustainable. Consistently funding organizations with good track records makes good sense. This cycle, we received high scores on our application, but you are elected but you, our elected officials, won't get to see them because we did not get a score of 100. So you don't even get to look at our application because it wasn't recommended because we didn't get 100. I realize your task here is monumentally difficult with more agencies vying for less money than ever. It's unfortunate that the money for Corps is the lowest investment rate from your general fund in 30 years at less than 1%. I also question why that is. And I also want to question this idea that there were meetings where it was asked specifically by organizations what should be considered. Either I or my co-director have been to every single one of those meetings, and we've consistently said childcare. Thank you.
Next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Heather Berquez, and I'm the other Co-Executive Director at the Santa Cruz Toddler Care Center. I wanted to bring up that the Santa Cruz Childhood Advisory Council's 2023 strategic plan noted that there is a shortfall of 2,971 infant toddler childcare spaces. To put that into perspective, the Santa Cruz County Housing for Health Partnerships reported that 1,850 people are experiencing homelessness. People experiencing homelessness is an issue that the city and county have identified as critical and have carved out funds in Corps. Yet more people are experiencing the lack of childcare, and not one childcare organization has been recommended. At the county level, childcare has been completely cut. I don't know if you know this, but childcare in our county for one- to three-year-olds starts at $1,800 a month and can go up to over $5,000 if you're looking at a nanny. And for people like me, who I am due in December, I don't know if I can stay in this county because I have a child on my way. And I know many other families, when you talk to them, that is their concern, is can they afford to pay rent, their mortgage, childcare, and then all the other expenses? Or do they need to leave and go somewhere else? So I know it's a silent issue that we might not be seen every day on the streets, but it is an issue in every family with young children. For our center specifically, 70% of our families receive scholarships. And I'm going to have to go to a board meeting on Thursday and talk to them about, are we able to continue funding those scholarships? Or do we have to start cherry-picking what families we can serve? And do we stand by our mission and use up our reserves? Or do we only provide childcare for the wealthy? I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional. Their pregnancy hormones, I blame them. But thank you.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Evening, Council CEO Ray Cancino, Community Bridges. Tonight's in regards to Meals on Wheels. So although we received a 95 score of our recommendation for Meals on Wheels, initially, we were not recommended for funding. At the board meeting earlier, as discussed, we are being recommended for $300,000, which is still representative of 75% of previous funds. This last year, we were receiving 405. What does that mean with a 25% cut, right? Well, that means almost 500 people will be cut in the next three years. That means, for the first time in the history, in 50 years, we will have a waitlist. What does that mean for you, as city council members? That means, in the city of Santa Cruz, we will be cutting 90 individuals in the next three years of older adults that are unable to receive food and services in our community. Those are the real impacts. You know, I understand that there is a difficult choice ahead of you. I understand that there is a priority that's been set, and you should be commended, actually, in being a very proactive council of looking for new revenues, including Measure D, including the Childcare Trust. Like, you guys have stepped it up to find the gaps where county has kind of left local communities behind. I just urge you to continue to do that for other sectors and for other parts of our community, including the aging community, which is the fastest-growing demographic in the state, fastest-growing demographic in our community, and will be severely impacted without additional resources in your decision-making and calculations tonight. So thank you again, and best of luck with your deliberations.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Next speaker? I know you had a bunch of children here, and I apologize that they didn't get to speak, but thank you for bringing them.
Absolutely. My name's Leigh Dubois, Executive Director at the Boys and Girls Clubs of Santa Cruz County, as you mentioned, Renee. We did have club members who were very eager to speak to you tonight and unfortunately weren't able to stay. So I'm happy to advocate on their behalf, as well as on behalf of the 1,200 youth served annually by our academic success programs, including more than 500 at our downtown Santa Cruz clubhouse just down the street. I'm here to request continued support for our Project Learn initiative. This is an evidence-based program that addresses the inequity in educational outcomes of youth living in low-income households by providing academic support during out-of-school time. Our local efforts have received uninterrupted funding since the Corps initiatives launch, as well as through earlier iterations of city and county funding. With these funds, our clubs provide an essential safety net childcare service for local K-12 youth and their families. Project Learn is the foundation of our high-quality, affordable after-school and summer programming, where more than 50% of our youth receive financial assistance to attend our programs. This provides a supportive place to be while their parents or caregivers work or go to school themselves. We know that this program works. More than 81% of our club kids report receiving mostly As and Bs in school, thanks to prior Corps funding. We also know that our clubs successfully combat chronic absenteeism, with youth who attend our programs having greater school attendance rates than their non-club peers. We also know that local schools are facing declining enrollment as families struggle to make ends meet here in Santa Cruz. And childcare plays a huge role in that, as you have heard from colleagues here this evening. Unfortunately, as was also mentioned, the county has not funded any childcare programming through their Corps allocation. And I urge you to prioritize your discretionary funds to supporting essential, high-quality childcare programming.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Next speaker in line, please?
My name is Cheryl Frenzel. Three years ago, I came here and fought for the Diversity Center to be included in Corps funding. And for the very first time, Santa Cruz government funded us in a meaningful way. We took your three-year investment, and we ran with it. We launched a free LGBTQ+ mental health clinic. We reoriented ourselves as a wellness center, and we launched powerful programming for youth, seniors, trans folks, parents, educators, and many more. We held talent justice as our top priority and finally hired full-time, benefited, and deeply talented individuals. This is the next generation of LGBTQ+ leadership. I want to ask you to invest some amount of funds from your discretionary funds into your local LGBTQ+ center. While we serve the county, true, the city of Santa Cruz is a major benefactor because we are physically located here. It was under great controversy that the Diversity Center chose the city of Santa Cruz as its home. And we're here, serving this community. We are also a training site for student therapists wishing to specialize in LGBTQ+ mental health. Do not underestimate the meaning of having a vibrant, visible LGBTQ+ center in your community. We don't receive almost any local funding from government either. We are almost all self-funded. So this Corps investment changed our trajectory. And I am sure we can all agree that the lies of LGBTQ+ people have just gotten more tenuous. I am asking you to please include us, any amount, $10,000, in your discretionary funds to show us that you care about us being here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out here tonight. Next speaker, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the City Council. My name is Jennifer Merchant. I'm the Executive Director at Grey Bears. So on a normal day with our current funding, we provide food delivery to 4,100 individuals throughout the county, 2,100 of whom are, excuse me, 1,200, 1,200 of whom are homebound. We provide food to individuals at our distribution center, 2,000 people a month. And we're on pace right now to feed 60,000 meals to people in mid-county. 700 of these people are residents of the city of Santa Cruz. But really, despite all of that healthy food talk, we know a thing about cutting up a piece of pie. I appreciate those of you who have listened in the past weeks and months to phone calls from Grey Bears, responded to emails requesting our funding of your discretionary dollars. Our proposal was originally intended to grow our current program by 25%. The county's action this morning, even though we were not recommended originally for a penny, which would have cut our food budget in half, allowed us to stay at status quo. So our program currently is flat, maybe a cost of living bump above it. We're grateful for that allocation. And we're here this evening rescinding our request to the city for your discretionary funds. But I do want to say here, in solidarity with our other nonprofit partners, no safety net services should operate on a three-year roulette wheel. And I think that's what you're hearing from folks. It's a struggle to not be funded and wonder where that funding is coming from when we see what we're doing in our community every day. So I thank you for your attention to the matter.
Thank you. And the last couple speakers, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, thank you. Karen Delaney Volunteer Center. We're in a unique position of both getting recommended for new funding and being cut from safety net funding. And what I should be doing is begging you to choose the staff recommendation that puts one of our programs back. But I think we have to tell the truth, and we have to go into harm reduction mode. Nobody intended, I don't think, to do anything but strengthen the safety net. But sometimes there's unintended consequences. And when those are knocking at your door, you have to tell the truth. I would be lying if I said, if I said, "Thanks for the new money because it's coming by kicking people, hungry seniors and people, and closing down our youth program." That's ridiculous. To not see that the promise of something new with no enrollment is not equal to actual jobs and services people rely on. Do you run your budgets that way? Do you run your business that way? Do you ever vote on anything where you don't ask, "Hey, which of these has vacant positions? And which of these have real working people in them? Which of these are we hoping to fill? And which of these will be kicking people out of?" You don't know whether any of these staff recommendations will result in a net job gain or a net job loss, a net service gain or a net service loss. And if we're going to be kicking people, and it's tough, I get it, it is tough. But what's coming out of our community is tougher. My suggestion is this. On behalf of all new programs, any new program that got recommended for funding, take half our money and use it to backfill real jobs with real people using real services because that at least is harm reduction. And that's probably the best we're going to get right now.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm going to go ahead and let you speak, and I found out we have one more person online, so we'll get them last after you.
Thank you very much. Today, I speak to you as both a staff member at the Boys and Girls Club, but more importantly, as the father of a club kid. At the club, my daughter Ayla, a dual-immersion second-grade student at De La Viega, has received swim lessons, caring after-school care with bilingual homework help, free healthy meals, and participation in choir and musical play performances just in the last year. For a club family, a monthly rate is about $180 a month. For onsite after-school care programs like CKC, that costs $450 a month. To make sure we're a safety net for all, we scholarship heavily between 50% to 60% of our youth, supported by grants and donations. Working families that rely on us to further their education, feed their kids, and provide them with the safe third spaces between home and school. The county was split today on punting a decision on set-aside funds or to advance a select few initially named by Supervisor McPherson. They never actually discussed the staff-produced plans A through C and ultimately decided to allocate those funds. The final point that I would raise today is that the City Council has invested heavily in the downtown plan that will bring new homes and taller buildings to the heart of downtown, taking on the state's housing mandate right here. That's something that the county hasn't really had to deal with in the same way. And I'd argue that these set-aside funds and a larger portion from the county should also be focused on this area so that these new families that we welcome into these new buildings have easy access to the programs they will need to thrive. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. And we'll take the last caller online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Dusty Collier Worth, and I'm here online advocating for funding consideration for the Diversity Center. It is a vital resource for every LGBTQ+ people in the greater area. And more importantly, we are located in the heart of Midtown Santa Cruz. I know I can resonate with many people when I say historically marginalized and underrepresented communities recognize a space as unsafe until there is a symbol, a sign, something to indicate that the space is safe. Your Diversity Center of Santa Cruz is that symbol to the LGBTQ+ community that this is a safe space for them. More importantly, though, applying under-healthy environments easily could have applied for funding under any of the Core Criterion as we serve those aged from 5 to 100. Please, as you consider where you might be able to place some reserve funding, please consider the Diversity Center as the vital resource that it is for LGBTQ+ people and allies, which I hope many of you consider yourself to be allies. Allyship takes action. And most importantly at this time, the most important action that you can take is with your funding allocation to support your LGBTQ+ community, youth, seniors, all ages and stages. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for calling. And at this time, we're going to bring it back to the council, and I'm looking for a motion. It looks like Councilmember Calintari Johnson has a motion.
Thank you, and I sent it to Bonnie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, I'm going to make the motion. Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I know the motion, so I'll second when it comes.
Thank you. Motion to, actually, I'm just going to look at my computer because I can't read. Oh, there we go. Motion to approve the recommended award for collective of results in evidence-based core investments, request for proposal RFP process, direct staff to reduce all recommended awards by 5%, totaling $30,964 and allocating $220,540 using the city's 189, 576 discretionary funds, plus $30,964 from the 5% reduction of the remaining city core funding for elected official set aside for emerging needs or priorities not funded through the competitive RFP process in the following way. So I, I'll read the motion and I'll explain it. Split equally across core conditions and tiers that meet a range of following criteria, where next highest rankings in the area and tier at least, sorry, can't read that. I'm just going to look at my computer, I can't read that. Next highest rankings in the area and at least a ranking of three. So they were the next highest ranking in that area, in that core area, and at least a ranking of three. A score of 85 or above, services that are centered in the city of Santa Cruz and services that are focused on childcare, youth, and/or essential basic needs services. So following that, this would include the following organizations at the following recommended funding. Boys and Girls Club Project Learn for 36, 756, Coastal Watershed Council, Watershed Rangers, Santa Cruz Toddler Center, Community Bridges Meals on Wheels, Dantos Senior Care. The third part is to direct staff to coordinate with Human Services Department to execute agreements for all final recommended awards and set aside funds. Direct staff to coordinate with HSD to return by April 30th, 2025 with an update on new and existing core contracts, lessons learned, and framework. Direct staff to explore alternative community program funding models and bring back options for future council consideration. And direct staff to explore additional funding sources for the organizations listed above and to return to council with options in the future.
Okay, thank you. And now do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. On your motion?
Yeah. I have a lot to say, so I'm going to glance at my notes, so I get it all. I first, I want to thank everybody for being here today, for your patience, for the pauses that we had to take, and really for the work that you do day in and day out. It's a tremendous, it's a tremendous service that you give to our community. I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Brown, your frustrations, you are not alone. And I also want to acknowledge the work of staff. This doesn't all fall on you. I know you've worked really hard to try to make this process work and we all agree that it's not. It's not working, it's not working for anyone. It's not working for staff, it's not working for council, it's not working for our CBOs, it's not working for those who we want to serve. So, so it's not working and I think there is a better way to do this. That's why I've given the direction that I've given. At this point, I hear what you're all saying, some of you have asked to delay. I'm not interested in delaying. I think at this juncture, delay would just have more negative impacts frankly than will already be the case. And so I'm not proposing a delay and I'm not following any of the specific A through D options that staff recommended for discretionary funds. I try to look at this as objectively and, excuse me, as objectively, I'm losing steam, as possible. I try to look at it a way that aligns with our city's stated visions and values and the commitments that we've made. And that's why I sort of created that criteria list. I had a whole grid, I had a whole grid that I created for myself to kind of get through where it all falls. And I appreciated those of you who reached out and that I had meetings with. It wasn't necessarily based on that, it was this grid that I created based on those criteria. You know, we heard from you all that, that the services are worthwhile to invest in, right? Do we invest in the urgent needs that we have every day, like putting meals on the table? Or do we invest in upstream, you know, zero to three childcare and after school programs? Well, we have to invest in it all, right? Children zero to three, meals for seniors, therapy for sexual violence survivors, LGBTQ services, gang prevention. I mean, all of these are important and you've each articulated beautifully why they're important. You've demonstrated from your work why they're important and therein lies the problem. It's all worth funding, yet we, this isn't a scarcity mindset, I tend to come things with an abundance mindset, but we are limited. We are limited in our resources, we are limited in our scope frankly. This is often not the role of cities. Many cities don't take out funds from the general funds to fund these basic needs services. I'm really proud that our city does. I'm also proud of other ways, I think one of the, Ray Cancino spoke to it, other ways that we are trying to invest in our services, you know, children's fund, our childcare development fee, fingers crossed, hopefully a soon, soon to be revenue, sugar sweetened beverage tax. So we're trying to think out of the box and invest, but we're limited. And as a grant writer, and for the record, I did not work on any of these core grants. I did not talk to any organizations about core grants. Obviously, it's a conflict of interest. But for the record, when I do work with organizations, I recommend that you don't rely on any one source of funding. And you all know that. I'm speaking to the choir here, you all know that. And, and, and I'm inviting my CBOs that I love and have worked with for decades in this community to not rely on core. It's not, it's not a reliable source of funding, it's very limited and we cannot meet all the needs that are out there. And all of the needs are worth funding, I'll just reiterate that and say it again. I just, I want to also ask and invite you to please have patience and grace with us. Many of you did display that tonight and you did display that through your conversations with us. Please have grace and patience with staff. None of us are perfect and we are doing our best. We can do better. I know we can do better. And that's why I've set the motion that I have in front of you. And I just want to thank you again, really from the bottom of my heart, you do such important work and our city would not be where it is without your work. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
Thank you. Can you scroll out so I can see the entire motion? Thank you. Okay, so, thank you. I think you're touching on what I was going to ask for as well. I have my own concerns about the core process moving forward and I don't think this is the day to have that discussion about the process. It's been a new process, it's been a work in progress process, and we've changed things along the process and it's, it's still not a process that works. And so a future discussion about the process and our city participation and how we contribute funds to our community, our organizations for maximum impact to our residents and a future discussion of bringing stability and how the city can in a limited capacity support stability of our residents. And I'm glad that some, some of you recognize that, you know, this is, we're not cutting safety net services, we're contributing funds to safety net services. We are a municipality that has very significant departments of a lot of city business that needs to be run. And unfortunately, you know, that includes our water department and infrastructure for water and, you know, our, our fire department and, you know, we have public works and huge, huge things in the city that are being worked on. But the people, what we're finding is the needs of the people over the last, since COVID, over the last couple decades, have really outpaced the resources available. And at a federal level, at a state level, investments into the needs of the people are, are really inadequate and unacceptable. And it's really, it's really hard. And so I'm, I'm glad that I sit on that Health and All Policies Committee here at the city of Santa Cruz, that we can continue to explore ways to really support health and well-being of the people of Santa Cruz. And I'm glad that, you know, it's recognized some of the proactive work we are doing in terms of our area master aging plan. You know, our county health data says that one in three people will be, over the age of 65, will be seniors by the age, by 2030. And how are we preparing for that? How are we investing in that? And how are we aligning with community needs and priorities? And how are we advocating for that? And so our children's fund, our, you know, childcare impact fee, our, you know, proactive policies, and even Measure Z, this sugar sweetened beverage tax that was on the recent November ballot, you know, is, is a proactive approach to potentially generate 1.3 million to invest in health initiatives in our city because we see the needs. Now, given that, you know, I think it's, I'm wondering if there, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. In seeing all this, I think you're addressing some of the items I wanted to bring up. But I see three programs that are directly serve our marginalized communities and that would be the Barrios Unidos, Monarch Services, and Diversity Center. And I'd like to propose dividing it among the nine for an equal $21,064 of each of those. So that's my proposal. I think, you know, with, with our categories of youth and youth priority and our senior care, I think, you know, I appreciate your attempt at addressing that. But I really see those three that aren't listed there as serving a real critical need, especially in a time of future federal level politics coming that will influence a lot of unknowns. So I'm looking to, Madam Clerk, there's some clarification needed.
Just to clarify the friendly amendment, are you saying to add seven, eight, nine?
Correct, correct.
To number two, you're going to amend number two.
Two, to add seven, eight, nine, which would change all the totals to 21,064.
Did you say three, 64? 21,000?
21,064.
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
So, you're putting me in a tough position. Like I said earlier, all of these organizations are doing very worthwhile things. And I work with these organizations in my other capacity. And I tried to find a process by which, again, I was trying to be as objective as possible and that's why I laid out those criteria. And then when I went through the grid, given that criteria, that's where I landed. So if we, if I accepted your friendly amendment, that would throw out that whole criteria that I came up with. So I think for now, I'm not going to support it for those reasons, but maybe I could be swayed otherwise.
Councilmember Watkins?
And I just want to say, if you could pull up the motion one more time, I think it's, whatever outcome happens today, I think, I do want to say that with this core process and bringing back a future, bringing back the discussion for how the city participates in core, maybe we don't participate in core, maybe we do our own funding separately as we did before. There are so many questions to the process, but that limited pot of funding, we're always looking to increase and invest in. So I really want to make sure that whatever, whatever happens here today, that we don't have to wait three years from now when core, the three-year cycle of core is over to figure out how to invest in dental care for low-income seniors because Medicare doesn't pay for it. That's unacceptable. So there, I don't know about your grid, I've just seen this, but I really see these three programs as serving essential needs in our categories of youth, childcare, and marginalized communities.
Councilmember Watkins, you had your hand up?
Thank you. Trying to think about where to start here. Well, let me just start by saying thank you to the organizations that are here and for those that aren't here but have applied and provide these critical services to our community. I share the love of what you do and the appreciation of what you do and also the struggle of being a nonprofit that is trying to get funding to do what you do that you know is so important. So let me just start with saying that. I want to thank the staff for, I think, doing the best they can with a really, I mean, some could say a fool's errand frankly. I don't know if there's a win here on this one. So I'll just, I'll say that. I think it's a real challenge. There's, having been on the council now, when Randy, your predecessor, brought this concept forward around how do we get cross jurisdictional support to bring this broader network of social safety nets into our community? That's sort of the, that was the aspiration at the time. And it's a worthy aspiration. As we've seen, how it's played out has been really, really challenging and difficult. And, and I mentioned this at a prior meeting, it also was going to rely on a lot of other jurisdictions participating and that has not played out. So I won't be on the council, but moving forward, I would not be surprised if sort of dissolving core is the best next step and revisiting how some of these decisions are made. That feels good for the decision makers, good for the providers, and good for the staff that work on trying to factor it all together. With grants, as I know many of you know that I know, having worked on grants, there's some that get funded and some that don't. And it's always unfortunate. And especially when I look at this list, I don't see one unworthy organization whatsoever. Incredible work, essential work. I know for folks who've, I've served along or have, you know, worked with along these past eight years, childcare has always been a critical area for me that I just never saw as something that should be competitive. It's an essential element of what our fabric of society needs. So for me, that was always something I was committed to wanting to support. And as was mentioned, we now have a dedicated children's fund that was codified by the voters that will be in perpetuity forever through Measure A at the time, which is a portion of the cannabis tax dollars. That's how you get things institutionalized and supported. And I want to thank the community for seeing that as a critical item also. Is it enough? No. But is it something that will be there forever? Yes, unless the voters overturn it. Same with Measure Z. And I know that was a challenging one and we'll see how it all shakes out, but fingers crossed it goes forward. But that's another funding source with an advisory body dedicated to health and wellness and upstream investments and critical needs for health of our community. That's how you get things done that are priorities around the services you all provide. And I think Santa Cruz should be really, really proud of what we've done. So let me just, I just, I know this is a challenging meeting, I know it's a very emotional meeting, of course it is. There's critical things that are on the balance here. But let's not also lose sight of some of the things that have been really incredible successes in our community and, and those, those have been. So are there more ways to do that? Absolutely. And I implore the next council to continue to look creatively at those types of solutions and to find ways to do that because it invests in the same values that we all share as elected who represent our community and as community providers who live here and serve our community. We share these values. So, okay, so I'm off my soapbox. But I just wanted to say that because this is an impossible situation for us to be able to meet the needs that we hear as well as trying to follow this criteria that we had agreed upon as flawed as it feels. So that being said, I am supportive of the proposal. I do have a friendly amendment that I think maybe we'll get a little bit at what you, Councilmember Bruner, were trying to get to, which is to add to number six, to have staff integrate options into fiscal year 2026 budget process, additional funding options for increasing the total commitment to community programs and to bring it back no later than six months as part of the budget proposal. That I know is going to be a natural place for looking at funding for additional resources and hopefully will somewhat align with the timeline associated with the core allocations, but will give time to look at how to bridge some of these gaps that we were unable to meet with this process and find creative ways to hopefully bring those, those dollars to meet those needs. So hopefully that's supported by my colleague.
Yeah, thank you. I, I hope, yeah, I think that does get to a little bit of what Councilmember Bruner was getting to, yeah.
So you accept that amendment? Okay. I know Councilmember Newsom, you haven't had an opportunity to speak on this item. Do you have any comments that you would like to add?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My comments will be just very brief. You know, we're in a, there aren't many good options here. We have very limited resources with a lot of really well-deserving programs that are in need of funding in our community and it's a very difficult decision. One thing that is clear though is that this process seems like it has transparency issues and it has a lot of issues with how it goes forward and we need to reevaluate the process and we need to do a really deep look at it and see, as has been mentioned, if we want to continue in this process or not moving forward. Something that, a very quick, I guess you'd say friendly amendment or something that I want to just quickly ask, so number six on the motion says, direct staff to explore additional funding sources for the organizations listed above, which are just those listed above. are just those listed above. Could we possibly include in those organizations that will, we will explore additional funding sources for, the three organizations that Councilmember Bruner, um, asked for?
Yeah, that was, that was my understanding, yeah.
That's the understanding?
If we need to clarify, then let's do that.
I was not prepared on that. Okay, thank you for that.
Councilmember Brown?
I'm gonna speak to the nonprofits first of all, um, and then to the community. I'm sorry that I'm, this is really emotional, and it's not emotional for me because I'm frustrated with the process or it's about me. I am, I am sad, I am, because I know what is gonna happen to the people I care about in this community. I am saying this because I am aware, it is not an abstraction of what these cuts, they are cuts to funding that has been provided over the years, what this is gonna mean in the real world for people, for the child who doesn't have a safe person to talk to after being sexually assaulted, because there, there's no more funding for the, um, for the seniors who are gonna end up in nursing homes because, um, they can't get, they can no longer get a grab bar or, or rides to and from their doctor's appointments that are gonna end up in a nursing home that has nobody monitoring it, because that funding too was cut. I am talking about, um, we are, we are talking about, um, the most vulnerable people among us, and there are gonna be real consequences for this. And the fact that we are sitting around saying, well, there's winners and losers and, you know, it's unfortunate that not everybody can get funded. I wanna talk about what, what has happened over time. We are providing collectively between the, the city and the county, um, the lowest level in non-inflation adjusted dollars to our community program, our nonprofit social service safety net in three decades, the lowest. We are not growing any pies here, we are not in abundance mode, we are cutting. Uh, 20 years ago, the city council, this city, provided two and a half million dollars to the pot for community programs, 350 dedicated just for childcare. We have been cutting the amount going to these service providers who are not, um, just coming here out of self-interest. These are people who are working day and night, often for minimum wage, barely able to make it themselves, some of them living in their cars to provide services to people who are even more vulnerable than them. And when we are told, well, you know, that's just the way it goes, it's not acceptable to me. And I am, I am shouting about it now because there are so many programs that can't do that, they are afraid. They're afraid to speak up because they are reliant, they know that if they do, they become the problem, and then they don't get recommended for funding. And through this opaque process, they can, basically, we have staff over here saying, well, you know, and council members and board members of the Board of Supervisors saying, well, they just didn't write a good enough proposal, you know? To the community, I wanna say, here's what's going on. When the decision was made to shift from member, the elected officials reviewing applications for community programs funding, um, it, it didn't take long, it wasn't a convoluted process, um, but some elected officials don't like to be lobbied because it makes them feel like I do right now, right? So they decided to hire consultants, get the staff involved, and create what has now become a Byzantine and capricious, and I would argue mean-spirited process. So what happened? Consultants, process, further and further removed from elected officials. You've already heard me rant about how we don't have access to information to make decisions about, not about who our favorite program is or who's got the most innovative idea, but about who we, about life-saving services, and life-saving services are being cut here, right? We are made, it's not just about like, oh, unfortunate trade-offs. This is about people who literally don't have any other safety net available to them, right? Because we have eviscerated the public sector safety net as well. So, so my, my being upset here is about the fact that we are, we have allowed a process to basically just shut the door on a whole bunch of people in our community who are gonna need support more than ever in the coming years. Eighty percent of the programs that were funded, eighty percent of the services, okay, some adjustments were made this morning, I haven't had time to do the math because I spent some time crying instead, um, but essentially what that means is almost a $4 million cut to service it, to critical safety net services, right? It's going somewhere else. They're all, you know, there are programs that I think if I had to create the priorities, my priorities would be triage, right? They would be about life-saving services first, not about innovation or whatever the new program might be. There is an absolute difference between cutting funding, shutting off funding for a program that exists, that has, as Karen Delaney said, people, staff who are working those jobs, taking care of people who are gonna lose those jobs, and another program that's now gonna start something up, that may get, may lose funding three years from now. There is nothing rational about this, there is nothing humanitarian about this, and I think that we ought to be telling the truth about it. We, the reviewers on these panels, were not allowed to consider, the, the grandest irony of all, collective of results and evident, I can't even remember the exact, results and evidence, right? Well, they can't see any evidence about program effectiveness, um, program performance prior, at all, any prior program performance. How is that results-based decision-making? Right? It's all about what they're, what the, the programs say they're gonna do, right? I heard horror stories about what some of the reviewers said, the lack of cultural competence when, in the comments. I cannot, I am offended, and I understand why y'all don't want those released, because there is some stuff in there that is not pretty. It does not make us look good to have reviewers with no cultural competence making decisions. There is another one. I could go on, I'm not gonna go on, but what we are talking about here at the end of the day is shocking. 1.24 million recommended for programs that have, currently have core funding, 1.24 million. That is nothing. Eighty percent of tho, of those services, just gone, so that we can try, try something new, in some cases. I'm gonna leave it there because, you know, but the community is gonna be hearing more about this, and I've got plenty more to say, um, but I just felt like I really had to say it here, this is my last opportunity to do so, and, uh, from this position, and I am just, I really hope that you guys think about what you are doing here and what the costs are gonna be. We could reject this, we could just say no, and that's not gonna happen here. But it should, if, for people with good conscience, it should be what happens here tonight. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you. I think, are we ready to take a vote?
You wanna show it? Or, oh, you want me to take it?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Watkins?
Aye.
Bruner?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keely? He's absent.
Thank you, the motion passes, um, with five yes and one no, and, um, and one absent. Thank you. Um, and that concludes item 30, and I'm just doing kind of a time check here, and I know that, um, we've got item 31, and wondering, do we wanna, they've been waiting patiently, move on to item 31?
That is, uh, completely your call, Vice Mayor Golda. We do still have the staff, I was checking to, to look to see if our staff are still here, because I think our water director might have cut them loose, but I see they are still here in the audience.
I've been seeing them sitting there, that's why I thought they might wanna...
The council has the appetite for it, I think we can knock it out fairly quickly.
I think we can as well, I think it's a great item that you're bringing for us this evening, maybe you could, um, um, I'm sure we all read the report, so if there's a brief staff presentation from the water department, um, we can go ahead and get started with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want us to wait a moment for the finding out? Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Golda and City Council.
Thank you for your patience.
Of course, thank you. Heidi Lookemach, Water Director. Um, we just have a really brief presentation, and it really is a feel-good item, I think. Staff has worked really hard on putting together a program that can help fund some of our, um, folks that are being challenged with paying their everything with respect to, um, raising prices in, in the world, but certainly our influence can be on utility bills. My staff has put together a little presentation just to share with you all the work that they've done. We've worked a lot with Public Works, because what you'll see is an opportunity that touches on water, sewer, and garbage bills. Um, and then with Elizabeth from Finance to set up the, the, the financial piece of it. Um, we're sharing the program with you tonight, the ask tonight is really authority to open up a new project so that we can shift funds around, which is a requirement of setting up this type of program. Um, but I think the, the work that, that Megan and Kyle, Megan in particular, I think, really bringing this to us is really valuable to, to see and see how we can continue to bring positive influence to the community. So I'm just gonna hand it over to Megan and Kyle.
Thank you.
Perkins? I'm the utility services manager for SCMU. Um, you know, it's always interesting how items can sometimes mesh together, and obviously you've heard a lot tonight about a lot of pain that's happening in the community, and, um, I think what we have for you tonight is maybe a, a bright light at the end of the night. Um, this is a little bit of assistance that we're able to provide our utility customers to help them pay their utility bills, to keep the water on, to keep garbage picked up, to keep the sewer mains flowing. Um, I'm gonna pass it off to Megan, she's done a lot of great work tonight to go into the details, thanks.
Hello, everybody, Megan Bunch, I'm the policy or program analyst, I'm now with Water. Um, we are gonna just take you through quickly, looking at the program that we propose and, um, do a little bit of background as to how we got here and some of the decisions that came into the design of the program. Um, so, as you guys know, we've had, um, SCMU has been working for a very long time to try to grapple with the issue of affordability when it comes to utilities. It's not just an issue that SCMU or Santa Cruz is dealing with, it's a state and a national issue. Since 2016, um, SCMU has been working with a consultant to, um, look at what the, what the impact of rate fees and, um, fee increases have had on our customers, especially our more financially vulnerable customers. Um, and they looked at it, did it a couple different analyses over the course of a few years, the, um, using slightly different metrics each time, um, but the general outcome was that about 20 to 30% of SCMU customer base is experiencing some sort of affordability challenges. Um, this past summer, we took it a little deeper and did a survey with just customers that we believed would be potential participants in a customer assistance program, and we, um, asked them a variety of questions about, you know, would they be interested in a customer assistance program, what kind of supports would be most beneficial to them, as well as information, or asked them questions about their bill-paying experience, um, and got some really good feedback that helped, um, drive the, the creation of the program. Um, and we learned that, uh, about a third of the respondents did say that they are indeed having trouble paying their bills, so that, um, confirmed with what the consultants had been saying. Um, as I mentioned before, this is not an SCMU-specific, this is a state and federal issue, um, although legislatures at the state and federal level have not, um, they have dove into the, this issue and have been looking into affordability, um, supports, they have not been able to find any long-term ongoing, um, funding source, so they, but they do still continue, there are a couple bills, there was a bill at the State House, there's a bill, um, at the federal right now. So it's possible in the future we might get something, but right now, utilities are on their own to continue to try to find results here. So the, the issue of need is not in question, it's the funding. Um, at the state level, a lot, the larger investor-owned utilities are required to offer customer assistance programs, um, such as PG&E's Care Program, where PG&E uses rate payer fees to cover their, the cost of their customer assistance program. Unfortunately, publicly-owned utilities are not in a position to be able to do that. Prop 218 makes it so that we are restricted in how we use those funds. Um, so, public utilities such as ours have been grappling with this issue. Some, um, programs in the state of California, some customer, publicly-owned customer assistance programs are, um, being implemented, um, throughout the state. The most common funding mechanisms are donations or general fund contributions. As we were looking at trying to figure out how to fund this, we were ideally focusing on something that's more reliable, more feasible, um, and so we did some diving and came up with what we are proposing today, which is using late penalty, um, late payment fee, fees to cover our program. Um, those fees are not Prop 218-restricted, so it's legal to use. Um, also, it's an ongoing funding source. It's not going to be exactly, we don't know exactly how much is coming in any month and any year, but we, there are trends, and so it is feasible for us to anticipate what will be coming in, and we know that it's enough to cover the initial start of our program. We would like to expand our program and do more than just the initial that we're gonna talk about today, so we know that we will need to be looking for grants and donation programs, and obviously, should any federal or state monies come down either directly to our customers or pass through us, then that would be fabulous. Um, we are here seeking your support today so that we can get the proposed customer assistance program up and running in the early new year. Um, what's on the screen now is the, um, overview of the program, so for our, um, qualify, income-qualified enrolled participants, they will receive a monthly bill credit. Um, right now, we're thinking about starting with $25 a month. Um, they will also be granted a late payment fee waiver, and then in addition, we are offering, we'll, we will be offering some early leak detection notification as well, all of which will help support the financial impact of those customers. Um, we, once we get this program up and running with single-family customers, we then hope to move to multifamily customers, and then ideally, if we continue to find sources of income, we would like to expand and offer other supports such as, um, possibly some debt forgiveness or, um, one-time bill waivers if there's an emergency, um, or even leak repair support if we, um, are able to do that. So we are here today to, um, seek your support by adopting, um, the new utility customer assistance program, uh, council policy, as well as creating a special revenue fund. Those steps are necessary for us to move forward with finishing the operational planning and implement the program. Because SCMU is a multi-departmental entity, we, um, need to establish a citywide program. So the council policy does that, it locks it in as a citywide policy, um, a citywide program, and then the special revenue fund will allow us to have that financial operation for the program, and it will ensure that the special, the late payment fees are sheltered in that fund and will go directly to the program moving forward. So it just kind of locks this in as a citywide program. So we wanted to keep it super brief and just give you an overview of our, um, plans to date, but we are all here, um, to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation and for sitting through the core, um, recommendation process, and I do feel like it does kind of attempt to end the meeting on a high note, and so with that, is there anyone that has a question for staff? Councilmember Brown?
I do, I, um, I, I'll just say, I'll say my comment now, which is, thank you so much for, uh, working on this. Uh, it's something that's, I've thought about during my entire time on the council, um, and the limitations of Prop 218 do make it so difficult to try to support low-income consumers, so, um, kudos for coming up with a solution. Just, um, you mentioned that you, you think that the late fees, that, that pool will, um, be able to cover the initial proposed, uh, uh, needs, direct bill assistance. Um, do you expect that to grow over time? I mean, have you, in terms of the analysis you've done, like, how much money is that? Is there, um, I'm not, I'm gonna leave aside all the potentials for other, other funding sources, but just within the, um, limited scope of the fines, what, how much money is that?
The, um, late payment penalties have, were not levied for about three years because of COVID moratorium. So we, um, have data from all the years up until, from when it was initiated until the 2020, and then nothing until it just started again in 2024, which is another reason why we like this, because the... which is another reason why we like this because the general fund and the enterprise funds went without these funds for the last three years. And so we are just going to kind of reroute it to this program. To answer your question specifically, the, there has been a general increase in how much this revenues come in relative to the increase in fees because it is a percentage, the penalty is a percentage of the bill. And so as the bills increase, therefore, the penalty that's levied on it will. So it's possible that we may all of a sudden have a customer base that is really timely in paying their fees, and all of a sudden, this drops out from underneath us, but there's no history to suggest.
So just, I think that's what I was trying to get at, like, that's been pretty steady, that percentage of late payments. Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you so much. This is, this item was really interesting to read about, and I appreciate the proactive work in bringing this forward. It's nice to see you in this role. Thank you. And so I think the staff report said about 30% estimate of customers could use assistance. And you stated single-family homes would start, would begin with, if this were passed, and then multifamily homes, meaning like apartment buildings and things like that. How does it work when there's multifamily units on one meter? Or I'm sure that that has come up and you've accommodated for that? Or how would that work?
Obviously, really good question. It's a, we are starting with single-family customers because we have, they have accounts with us, so we can issue a bill credit in a very simplified way. Multifamily customers don't pay us directly. The payment goes through landlord or through whatever, property or the property management company. And so we are working on, kind of have a skeletal look at what we will do once we are able to launch that program. So the focus has been primarily on getting something up and running, which is the focus on single-family. And then, but we have been tossing ideas and looking at best practices. There are, I could not find but one program in the state that does multifamily because it's a challenging, you can't, we would be trying to get assistance directly to the customer. And these are customers that we don't have as our actual customers. We don't have accounts. So we will, but that's not to say that we don't have ideas. We have a lot of ideas, and once we get to the point where we can implement it, we think we can do it in a pretty effective way that gets the funding to the customer directly.
Okay, good.
Which is the end user, right? That's the goal here.
Right.
We have plans.
Good. I can think of several examples of multifamily housing where the tenant is charged a water bill fee by the landlord and without ever seeing a bill.
We're actually pretty excited. We don't know yet if it's happened, but we applied for a grant with some researchers at Stanford who will be helping us look into how to outreach these customers and better understand, there's a lot of different ways that the bill gets trickled down to the end user. So if we are able to get that grant and work with them, we're really excited about the possibility of diving into a needs assessment specifically for that. The needs assessment we've done to date has not been multifamily.
Okay, so still to come. Thanks for keeping that in the context of everything. I think that's really important. We have a lot of, a lot of users. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call on members of the public if anybody has a comment on this item. Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to us. A motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley is absent.
Motion passes with six ayes and one absent. And with that?
I move to adjourn.
I really appreciate that, and I'm sure you're seconding, you're heading off to DC. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Thank you guys so much for your creativity.
That's awesome. I was just thinking, yeah, this is something we've been wanting for a long time. It's so great. Yeah. Thank you.